Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. It's our 5:00 PM session, Baltimore Police Department. This is our last session of the evening. Joined by Council President Jack Young. To my immediate left, Councilman Leon Pinkett, Vice Chair of the Committee from the 7th District. Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Z. Cohen from the 1st District. Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th District. Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District. Councilman Brandon Scott, Member of the Committee from the 2nd District. Councilman Yitschi Schleifer from the 5th District, Member of the Committee. Councilman Ed Risinger from the 10th District. Councilwoman Shannon Sneed for the 13th District, Member of the Committee. And Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District. Commissioner Davis, thank you for coming today. We're looking forward to having a robust discussion about public safety in the city and what BPD is doing. When we get started, Commissioner, I'm going to ask that you introduce everyone on your team, if you could just say their name and their position title. I know that you have a briefing today. My hope is that we can get through that somewhat expeditiously, hopefully in the 20 to 30 minute time range, so we can get right to the council questions. I know we've got a lot of good questions for you today. When your people are speaking, please make sure that they speak into the mic. As I've said at every hearing, if I politely or impolitely interrupt you, it is because you're not speaking into the mic. These hearings are being streamed live on Charm TV, so we want to make sure that folks Before we get started, we have some administrative business that the committee needs to attend We are unfortunately still at an impasse with the administration on negotiations. This is extremely frustrating. This council wants to pass a budget. This council strongly desires to have a partnership with the mayor and the administration, as I know that Mayor Pugh does as well. Mr. Klein, we have $13.2 million in surplus, which you are trying to move to fund balance for assignment to fire and police pension. It is my belief, and I think it's the belief of the council, that when we have cuts, significant cuts, to youth programming in this city, which we direly need, that that is a very irresponsible move. And as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Klein, I'm not asking for a response. Thank you. As far as I'm concerned, you have a major role and responsibility for where we are at in this process now. Is there a motion to amend Service 793, Employment Enhancement Services for Baltimore City Residents? Reduce by $1 million on Page 11, Line 5, strike $2,346,168, and insert $1,346,168. This is the Office of Employment Development Mobile Workforce Centers.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pinkett. Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Sneed?
Yes.
Costello, yes. Is there a motion for Public Works New High Capacity Trashcan Initiative, Service 661, Public Right-of-Way Cleaning, to reduce by $600,000 on Page 15, Line 14, strike $16,330,539, and insert $15,730,539?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pinkett. Pinkett?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Sneed?
Yes.
Costello, yes. Is there a motion for Mayorality-Related Debt Service, Service 123, General Debt Service, Reduce Unallocated Debt Service by $6 million on Page 9, Line 29, strike $83,216,943, and Replace with $74,454,570?
So moved.
Motion by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pinkett. Pinkett?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Sneed?
Yes.
Costello, yes. Is there a motion for Public Works Eliminate the Municipal Trashcans, Service 663, Waste Removal and Recycling? Remove $2.7 million from the budget on Page 15, Line 21, strike $28,225,593, and Insert
So moved.
Motion by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pinkett. Pinkett?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Sneed?
Yes.
Costello, yes. Is there a motion for Police, Service 621 Administration, Reduce Administration Budget
So moved.
Motion by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pinkett. Pinkett?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Schleifer? Schleifer? Sneed? Schleifer's absent. Sneed?
Yes.
Costello, yes. One, two, three, four, five, six. All six motions carry. This committee doesn't want to do this. We want to get a deal done. Please bring that message back. Commissioner Davis, if you could begin your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening to you, Council President Jack Young, and the rest of the council. This will be a brief PowerPoint presentation. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak about the recommended FY18 budget for the BPD. I'm here with various members of my command team, and I will allow them to briefly introduce themselves, starting with Chief Sturgis to my right.
Good evening, Chief Sturgis, I'm sorry, Chief Sturgis, Chief Financial Officer, as well as Chief of Management Services Division.
Good evening, Jason Johnson, Deputy Commissioner, Strategic Services Bureau.
Major Milton Corbett, the Commander of Special Operations Section.
Chief Stanley Branford, Chief of Criminal Investigation Division.
I'm Dean Palmer, Deputy Commissioner of Operations.
Ganeshia Martin, Chief of DOJ Compliance, Accountability, and External Affairs.
Major Byron Conaway, Homeland Security.
Stephen O'Dell, Chief of Forensic Sciences Evidence Management Division and IT.
Rodney Hill, Chief of the Office of Professional Responsibility.
Good evening, Drew Vedder, Police Commissioners, Chief of Staff.
TJ Smith, Chief of Media Relations.
Jim Gillis, Director of Government Affairs.
Carlton Epps, Director of Asset Management.
Elaine Harder, Director of Fiscal Services.
Don Bauer, I'm the Executive Officer of Criminal Investigation Division.
Rich Worley, Inspector, Chief of Patrol's Office.
Thank you. The mayor and I, Mr. Chair, much like yourselves, are committed to reducing violence, improving community engagement, enhancing constitutional policing in our neighborhoods. They are our top priorities. We are focusing our resources department-wide on reducing violence, ensuring a safer city through this budget, and we have opportunities certainly to make improvements. As we go through the PowerPoint presentation, I'm not sure who's controlling that. Okay, Chief Sturgis is. The commanders are aware which slides they're going to present, so we will just get right into the presentation, and I think Chief Ganeshia Martin is up first.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, and members of the council. As many of you know, we've spent the past couple of years, excuse me, past year or so, preparing and negotiating a consent decree, which was approved recently. In preparation for that, in fiscal 2017, the Police Commissioner reorganized the department to consolidate patrol and investigation functions under one bureau, and created a new bureau for Strategic Services. This change was necessary to improve crime-fighting strategies and address anticipated Department of Justice Consent Decree agreement. As you're aware, we spent quite a bit of time on actually doing proactive reforms, and under the Strategic Services Bureau, which Deputy Commissioner Johnson will speak about a little bit later, we've had quite a few successes. We revised the use-of-force policy, enhanced the distribution of policies, increased in-service training from one week to two weeks, issued body-worn cameras with an auditing component, created a performance review board, and use of assessment review board. We've designed a transparency webpage for community input. We've initiated a wellness program for managing stress resulting from the nature of police work. We anticipate that this program will actually be in full swing by midsummer. It'll address basic mental and physical health issues, PTSD, stressors related to law enforcement. And then, just really quickly, I'm sure you'll have some questions, but the highlights for fiscal 2018 is we anticipate being able to finally deploy mobile data computers. We also have instituted a new program at the Academy, entitled Strategies for Youth. The point of that is helping police officers deal with youth, not only realizing their cognitive abilities, but also that many of our youth come from backgrounds that create PTSD in them as well. We are going to have a technology resource plan, a staffing plan. We hope that our RFP for early intervention will be drafted and put out. We'll have a recruitment plan, a training plan, revised sexual assault policies. We should be able to institute our CIT training, which is training that addresses people in behavioral and mental health crisis. We'll have an eight-hour training for wagon drivers transporting people, and an audit plan that is part of the accountability plan that will go along with, once we actually institute policy, we institute training, then we'll have the auditing capabilities to make sure that we are doing what we're saying we're doing. So those are just a few things that we have planned for fiscal 2018. I've been before you earlier and talked about the different positions that we've asked for to be able to carry out this work. That is in the budget as well. So I'll leave that unless...
We'll just go through the entire presentation.
Sure, not a problem.
And Councilman, I inadvertently skipped over the budget highlights before I turned it over to Chief Martin, so I'm going to very quickly go backwards, just for about 45 seconds, and just go over a high-level budget highlights. And there it is. So of the highlights, $10 million to support the BPD's consent decree with the U.S. Department of Justice, a $5.5 million reduction in our budget, and this involves rather, $1.28 million to ground one helicopter, $839,000 to outsource building security, both at BPD Headquarters and City Hall, a vehicle reduction of $737,000, a reduction in telephone expenses of $604,000, and a $200,000 reduction in clothing and footwear expenses, and then $1.84 million in unspecified reductions that we're still working together with the administration to identify. So if we can go two slides forward to patrol and Deputy Commissioner Dean Palmer.
Good afternoon. The department is advancing an efficiency plan that will equip patrol vehicles with mobile data terminals, or better known as MDTs, and automatic vehicle location. These technology advancements will move the department closer to field-based reporting, which will be very efficient for patrol. Due to staffing shortages, we are not seeing the anticipated outcome that would allow officers to place more focus on proactive policing or community relationship building, and we look forward to these efficiencies. Patrol officers are spending more than 80% of their time on calls for service, whereas best practices recommends no more than 60% on-duty time addressing calls for service. We have over 250 officers on medical leave, although most of the extended leave is attributable to our current contract with the FOP. The department is navigating through a plan to shift administrative officers to operations. One component of the plan increases oversight of sworn officers that are on suspension or medical leave. We've expedited review of all suspended officers. Our medical review team has been expanded to include a supervisor, whose primary responsibility will be to hone in on the over 250 officers on medical leave or serving in a light-duty capacity. We also hired an HR director with extensive experience in managing FMLA issues. We have also increased our relationship with the city's medical provider, who evaluates our officers on medical leave. We anticipate increasing the number of officers returning to work full duty as oversight with the members and our contract that medical provider enhances. In spite of the staffing challenges, we successfully engage in a number of community commitments throughout the city. We've established the Police Chaplains Program. We participate in Outward Bound. We participate in NFL 60, Big Z in Blue, Thread. Police Commissioner has instituted a summer basketball league, building bridges, badges for baseball, that's run by Inspector Worley. Our Police Explorers Program within the schools, Shooting for Peace, Community Stat, Community Conversations in particular districts, Women in Law Enforcement, Reading Partners, Youth Workers, which we plan to hire 30 this summer, the Youth Academy, Youth Connection Centers, which were recently introduced for the summer months, and also we add a grand opening of our museum. Citizens Academy and the bridging officers and students with swimming, better known as BOSS. Fiscal 2018 recommended budget includes a reduction of $2.6 million from this service to provide funding for city schools, $737,000 for vehicle reductions. This reduces the fleet inventory by approximately 67 vehicles. $1.84 million from Service 622 will be determined before the start of fiscal 2018. And I'll turn it over to Chief Branford.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and members of City Council. The Criminal Investigation Division is focused on investigating crime and working closely with the State's Attorney's Office to ensure successful prosecution of all criminal cases. The Division prioritized warrant service on repeat violent offenders. The Division also identified patterns and trends to more effectively prevent retaliatory violence by violent gang members and organizations. Earlier this year, the family crimes relocated from BPD Headquarters to the Baltimore Child Abuse Center. This move allows the unit to better connect with its victims that's in need of their services. With that, I'll turn it over to Major Conaway.
Good afternoon. We've improved collaboration and communication with federal and local law enforcement partners. We created the Trigger Pullers List, and also launched our Gun Violence Enforcement Division, GVED, that tracks gun arrests all the way through prosecution. We utilize our analytical intelligence team to follow up cases from start to finish. The service aims to reduce homicides and shootings by focusing on criminal associates of victims, disrupting possible retaliation by rapid deployment, dismantling violent criminal organizations, drug crews contributing to violence. We also partnered with the U.S. Attorney's Office and State's Attorney's Office to track gun arrests and enhance the prosecution of cases. I'll turn it over to Major Corbett.
Good evening, Special Event SWAT and Emergency Services Unit. The Services Unit last year completed 146 high-risk raids, and they also participated in the 17 hostage barricade situation. On weekends, we'll deploy downtown to assist the safety of those that are downtown in the various clubs in the downtown area and around the Inner Harbor. And SWAT is also being used to assist and train across the agency, to include working with the professional development and the Training Academy on several joint training exercises. Also, they are deployed in the various crime zones throughout our city. I'm turning it over back to Byron.
As I said earlier, we continue to have strong relationships with our federal partners to gain tougher sentences for violent offenders. The department maintains a close collaboration with City Watch to address criminal activity throughout the city. We have had great success with City Watch and look to build upon that. It has been particularly helpful in special events.
So the, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Council President, members of the City Council. This next service, Emergency Communications, relates to our Police Dispatch Center. As you may recall, communications prior to fiscal 17 was under the mayor's Office of Information Technology and was subsequently divided between the Fire Department and the Police Department. The Police Department is budgeted for and operates Police Dispatch Center. The budget this year is essentially flat for that service. It just accounts for a transfer of three positions from the Police Department to the Fire Department, which essentially is housekeeping after the division that occurred the last fiscal year. Turn it over to Chief Hill for Internal Affairs.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, members of the council. Under the Office of Professional Responsibility used to be the Early Intervention System, it was revamped last year. In fiscal 2017, the program was merged with the Employee Wellness and Health and Wellness Section under the Management Services Division. This move was made to remove the discipline stigma from the process. All supervisors are trained for the use of Early Intervention System. Also, the Director of the Early Intervention System meets with the Commander and Officer for any flagged warning signs with a plan to develop a plan to correct and monitor behavior. Last year, there were 217 interventions. Also, the Equal Opportunity and Diversity Section was transferred from OPR and placed under the Management Services Division. This change improves oversight of the section and is in line with the best practices for managing a fair and inclusive workforce. We continue to increase transparency and trust with the community by opening trial boards to the public. We've seen an increase, the total number of cases received, about 31%, the majority of which were internal complaints, not external. The Office of Professional Responsibility has also seen the following improvements. The number of sustained cases are up by 21%. Excessive force complaints and cases are down by 45%. Discourtesy cases or/abusive language cases and complaints are down by 51%. Some of this was attributed to the Body One Camera Program, which appears to change behavior of citizens and officers involved.
The next service is Records Management. Over the past two years, our Field-Based Reporting Project has been stalled due to funding challenges, but in fiscal 18 recommended budget includes a state grant that funds the full purchase of mobile data terminals, which is computers in the cars that we've spoken about often. This funding eliminates the budget gap for the purchase of field-based reporting equipment for all patrol cars, and we will proceed full steam ahead in fiscal 18 to launch mobile data computers with field-based reporting, which will require a multi-step upgrade. Once our field-based reporting technology is in place, it will reduce the time required to enter Part 1 report into the system. It'll actually reduce it to zero, which is one of the metrics that we measure in this service. Also, the technology will provide officers with timely and actionable intelligence, which is a key to the crime fight. The other notable piece of information for this service versus fiscal 17 is Evidence Control Unit was transferred to the Crime Laboratory Service and to change and improve efficiency of the Evidence Control Unit. Major Corbett?
Crowd traffic and special event management. This service is responsible for investigating crashes that result in life-threatening injuries or deaths, provides traffic control along with dawn events and non-events, and manage the coordination of special events within the city. Last year, there were 800 accidents that was investigated by our crash team. Out of those 800 accidents, 52 of them was fadals. And the crash, not only do they do the investigation, they also evaluate the trends to assist in reducing the accidents within the department. The economy impact on these special events by hundreds, the impact by hundreds of the special events each year. Baltimore has several dozen high-profile events each year, which require the deployment of several hundred police officers. Special events has been critical in the security and police deployment of these events, which has resulted in nearly zero number of significant incidents at these events. The service prepared deployment strategies that allow the department to staff events while maintaining an appropriate presence in other areas of the city. And those various events that impact Baltimore City is the Baltimore Marathon, the 10-Miler, Preakness, Light City, the Oriole Games, along with the Ravens Game. Last year, over 70,000 hours, I mean 70,000 police hours were used for supporting special events. That's $2 million that was reimbursed from these events, and $1.9 million was irreversible. I'll pass it on to Recruit.
So the next service is Police Recruiting and Training. In fiscal 2017, we hired a new civilian Director of Human Resources and reassigned a police major dedicated to sworn recruitment only, which is housed within the Strategic Services Bureau. Separation of duties allows the department to focus on initiatives that'll increase the interest in working for the BPD in both the civilian and sworn capacity. Although last police contract brought officers pay more in line with surrounding jurisdictions, nationwide law enforcement profession continues to experience a decline in hiring. For calendar year, calendar year 2016, we experienced attrition in the amount of 221 sworn members and only hired 111. That the attrition numbers have stabilized and actually reduced just a bit during calendar year 17. Obviously, we aim to reduce them more in the future. So far this calendar year, we've hired 71 new officers. We have 100 officers, just under 100 officers presently in the Training Academy, and we're going to start an academy class in the next two weeks of 40 to 50 officers. We have recruitment initiatives for Baltimore residents to increase recruitment of those from Baltimore. Pizza in the Precinct, partnership with Live Baltimore, that shows trainees in the academy different residential areas of Baltimore, encourage them to move locally. In effort to reduce attrition, we have a public-private partnership to improve the working conditions of the district stations and the academy. The 1st District undergoing major renovations was the Western District, and the grand opening will be held this summer. Fiscal 18 recommended budget includes funding five new academy instructors to implement the requirements of the Department of Justice Consent Decree. The budget also includes funding for in-service training, backfill overtime, which will allow personnel to receive increased training in order, again, to implement the Department of Justice Consent Decree. Our in-service training has increased from traditional one-week training period to two weeks, so each Baltimore police officer receives two full weeks of in-service training every year, which is well in excess of the state mandated minimum, which is 18 hours. So we do 80 hours instead of 18. Effective June 1st, just the other day, changing the marijuana standard in terms of lifetime, the lifetime cap on marijuana use has been eliminated, which we believe will help us greatly in, by eliminating an arbitrary limit like that, will allow us to hire more readily. We're also seeing a change in the number of female applicants and African-American applicants. Those numbers have increased, and we also have reinstituted the Cadet Program, and we're currently processing applicants to be hired midsummer for the Cadet Program. Hand it back to Major Corbett.
Once again, Special Operation K-9 and the Mounted Unit. Currently, we have 26 K-9 dogs, and the Mounted Unit, we have six K-9, I mean, six mounted horses. The K-9 and Mounted Unit assist with all aspects of policing, from arrest to community engagement. Because of their superior sense of smell and hearing and physical capabilities, the trained new law enforcement K-9 is valuable supplement to the police manpower. The BPD K-9 dogs are trained to specialize in one or more of the following areas, CDS control, explosive, and guns, as well as apprehension. The support of the K-9 unit ensures the safety of the community members and the visitors in transit while attending events within the city. and the visitors in transit while attending events within the city of Baltimore. The K-9 team assists officers in the field on car stops and to remove illegal drugs and guns from the street and on circumseizure warrants to identify areas where drugs or guns are secretly being hidden. They also determine, the teams also frequently requested by community groups and schools for demonstration, which help improve the community engagement and build police trust. The Baltimore Police Department Mounted Unit is the national longest and continuous-serving mounted unit in the United States. They've been in existence since 1888, 1888. The Mounted Unit, again, has six horses. They continue to be extraordinary resources for the crowd control and also services as a force multiplier for police present. The unit is used every weekend to be visible downtown for crowd control dispersment in and around the various downtown area, Inner Harbor, and the clubs. The Mounted Unit staffed, we staffed 154 events last year, and we also promote positive police relationship within the city resident to show that we are ambassadors to the city of Baltimore. The Marine Unit. The Police Marine Unit serves as a sole jurisdiction patrolling and providing year-round security on the 60-plus miles of Baltimore waterfront. Keep in mind, there is no other agency that patrol the water waves in Baltimore. Baltimore Police Department is the only one that controls the water waves, patrols the water rigs in Baltimore. With that being said, is, we have the Baltimore waterfront and the Port of Baltimore, including Under Armour facilities, the Horseshoe Casino, and the Inner Harbor. And we have the eighth-largest port in the United States here in Baltimore. We also have the Port Covington Development. Will have a significant impact regarding boating, water safety, and law enforcement in and around that Middle Branch area. The Marine Unit and underwater recovery team are partnered with Homeland Security Investigation, the U.S. Coast Guards, and the FBI to operate as a team to protect the maritime critical infrastructure of Baltimore. We are ultimately responsible for the recovery of persons that are found in the water. Law enforcement duties such as boating laws, enforcement, and safety checks. We often find that various drivers operate their boats while under the influence. We also enforce that along with the Marine or Crime Prevention and Regular Conduct, regularly conducted, I'm sorry. Some of the Marine Unit duties include anti-terrorism patrol, the results of much of the Marine Unit being granted fun with no cost to the city. There's been several large events on a national scale that they have participated in: Fleet Week, Army-Navy Game, the Baltimore Marathon, and Light City. Just recently, during Light City, I don't know whether or not you saw this, they had an ATM machine that actually fell in the harbor. The Marine Unit had to pull the ATM machine out of the harbor along with, they had a boat that was on display, they had a bunch of umbrellas that was about to sink. The Marine Unit was able to go out and assist in removing that boat from sinking. They play a crucial role in part of safety and security for several other high-profile and local events, such as the New Year's Eve and also Fourth of July. As you know, that we have large crowds that come down to the Inner Harbor, and a lot of folks do not understand that the area of the Inner Harbor do not have a safety ring around it. So there's a few people that actually fell in the water during those times. So the Marine Unit is there to assist with them. And we also have a dive team. Okay, Aviation. Foxtrot is, is called, we call, the police officers call Aviation Foxtrot, is utilized in conjunction with existing crime-fighting strategies. They work with ground units to identify problem areas and direct patrol to particular locations. Also, they alert, they alert the problem areas and patrol them as part of their daily duties. If I can give you a situation that happened last night. We had one of our officers working, they recognized a Lexus that was wanted in a homicide. The operator of that Lexus was a suspect in a homicide. The officer lost him on car. The operator jumped out of the car and started running on foot. Thanks to Foxtrot, we were able to follow the suspect and take him into custody. Not only was he wanted for homicide, but he was also wanted for attempt homicide and two counts of first-degree assault and robbery. So that's the importance of having Foxtrot in the air, because it's a dual multiplier for the agency. They often see things that we don't see. They also allow us to, if there's danger on the other side of that fence, such as a dog or armed person, they see it before we see it. So it's important that we recognize the importance of the Foxtrot. As I said to you, Foxtrot is a force multiplier to ground units. One aviation crew can enhance the effect of ground units by two or three times during, due to the speed of movement and overall visibility of a sector. The service also assists with missing persons and vehicle pursuit, as they did last night. They often and crucially video crucial incidents, of major incidents, which forward, which forwards the ability of the city to provide citizen media outlets with footage of events which are enhanced by public interest. I use as an example that we have the Dirt Bike Task Force on Sundays, that we have out there every Sunday. There was a gentleman that was sitting on his dirt bike. He pulled out a automatic gun. He displayed it. It was through Foxtrot able to video that incident. We were able to identify that individual, pass that information on to the officers on the ground. We were able to apprehend that individual without him hurting a citizen in Baltimore. That's the importance of having Foxtrot. Fiscal 2018 recommended budget ground, recommended they ground one of our four helicopters, which generally is a savings of 1.28, 1.28 million for the service. But I must say to you that in grounding one of our helicopters, that means that you are putting us down by 25%. Yes, we have four helicopters, but we also have to have two helicopters ready and available at all times, because we have two different flights that continuously fly over the city of Baltimore. So when one helicopter is down, that helicopter is down for yearly maintenance. So it's a rotation that we use those helicopter on a constant basis. Thank you.
And your final service of the presentation is the Crime Laboratory 642. The service covers the crime scene, DNA analysis, serology, trace evidence, latent print analysis, firearms analysis, drug analysis, forensic facial imaging, photography, as well as evidence control and quality assurance. So your Crime Laboratory, you'd be happy to know, is the third-highest scoring service in the city. Every single service among all outcomes, we are number three. We were number one in the public safety outcome and number two overall. So we do have room for improvement, at least two, two points. The Crime Lab holds multiple international accreditations, ISO 17025, 1720, along with certification of the quality assurance standards of the FBI program for databasing, state licensure, all of which includes over 1,000 mandatory standards. We have made significant process or progress in securing funding to address various staffing deficiencies, to include a 2017 supplemental allocation that added 10 crime scene employees that have answered over 4,000 calls, which is around 300% above the national average. They have been put to good use, along with the supervisors that were added, that helped shore up the quality assurance system and lowered our overall non-conformities in the laboratory. This fiscal year, Evidence Control was transferred to the lab, along with taking, myself taking command of the Body One Camera Unit, both of which are now pursuing international accreditation, which is a first. And along that line, the Body One Camera Program, to this point, has recorded over 90,000 hours of video, 520,000 videos. And as Chief Hill has pointed out, has contributed to significant changes in behavior across the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that concludes our presentation. We're ready for questions.
Thank you, Commissioner and your team. We just talked about Aviation and Foxtrot. Commissioner, could you just briefly, one or two minutes, describe the importance of that tool?
Well, Mr. Chair, as you and other members of the Council are aware, most big-city police departments in our country, if not all, have a very limited vehicle pursuit policy, because bad things happen when police officers get involved in vehicle pursuits in urban environments. Typically, completely innocent people are hurt or killed. So, you know, one of the, one of the many benefits to having a helicopter up in the air is it slows things down. And we don't have a pursuit policy. We don't chase cars in the city, because we have an aviation program that's allowed to follow the cars and call out where they're heading, so we can tactically position ourselves and make arrests. The success that we've had with the Dirt Bike Task Force, and it's just a three-person task force, I would say that in addition to the quality of the police officers we have assigned to that unit, their biggest asset is the helicopter. It's able to identify where the dirt bikes gather. It's able to anticipate their travel routes. It's able to identify where these bikes, and most of them are stolen, are stored, and allows us to follow up with search warrant applications, et cetera. It's critical for missing person investigations, particularly the elderly, the Alzheimer's patients who routinely go missing. And with the infrared, the flare, they're able to identify heat signatures for people who are in wooded areas, et cetera. And that's been very helpful on a number of occasions. And with the recent spree of juvenile, violent juvenile offenders, particularly with robberies, our robbery arrests, our carjacking arrests have been really impressive of late. I wish those crimes didn't occur in the first place, but we've been able to close a lot of those cases, thanks to the presence of Aviation. If Aviation is up in the air and the bad guys are in a car, the chances of them getting away are slim to none.
Thanks, Commissioner. So I think I speak for everyone up here in terms of the dirt bike issue. We all have illegal dirt bike riders, which are a public, a significant public safety hazard throughout each of our respective districts. Obviously, everything that you just said I'm familiar with, but I wanted to put it on the record of how critical of a crime-fighting tool this is. So my question is, why is there a cut of helicopter in the budget?
Well, Mr. Chair, coming up with a $5.5 million reduction in the budget, that requires hard work. And, you know, the decision to make that cut was done to eventually achieve that $5.5 million reduction. There's a big price tag that's always attached to any aviation program, and that provided an opportunity to achieve, or realize, rather, that $5.5 million reduction.
But that wasn't your decision, was it?
Well, Mr. Chair, I think as you and the rest of the Council know, that, you know, we, the police department, stand here ready to present the BPD budget that was made in collaboration with the mayor and her office. So as we present the BPD's budget, the BPD's budget and the mayor's budget are synonymous.
Loud and clear. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Klein, whose decision was it to cut the helicopter?
Mr. Chair, before I answer that question, I want to clarify that any general fund surplus in Fiscal 2017 is going to be needed to meet the city's commitment of $90.2 million in bridge funding over the next three years for city schools.
So let's address that, because that's not what you said to me previously. You said the $13.2 million surplus was going to go to fund balance, specifically assigned for police and fire pension, period. Yes, you did.
I told you this afternoon exactly what I just said.
Mr. Klein, you can't continue to move the goalposts. You told me that's where the money was going. We went into these negotiations in good faith, with the understanding that that money was available, and you've moved the goalposts. You can't do that, period. So let's go on to the question at hand, which is, whose decision was it to cut the helicopter?
So the $5.5 million reduction to the Police Department budget was directed by the mayor, because HB 684, which was passed by the General Assembly, requires that as part of the city's increased commitment to the city schools, it increase our maintenance of effort by $10 million. And that's, that's permanent, a permanent funding increase. And the mayor decided that it made sense to shift funding from Police Department to funding for education and youth services. And so we worked with the Police Department. The Police Department provided options for meeting the $5.5 million, and this is one of the options that was agreed upon.
Who made the recommendation to cut the helicopter, Mr. Klein? Someone made, someone had the idea in their head that they were going to cut the helicopter, because it certainly didn't fly down here like a helicopter.
Police Department provided options.
So an aleckhart menu was provided?
And the mayor, and the mayor made the decision.
To cut the helicopter?
Yes.
I don't believe that. I think your office made the decision to cut the helicopter, and I think it's an irresponsible cut. Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Commissioner, I've been, even though I know the answer to the question I'm going to ask you, I think it's important to have it on the record. I think that we all understand that we're in a public violence crisis in Baltimore City. And I've been asking all agency heads, in particular, I know what your response is going to be, that I think it's time for the city to develop a comprehensive gun violence reduction strategy that would create some kind of entity. I don't care if it's MLCJ or whatever the new makeup of that office is going to be, that would coordinate the efforts of all the city agencies around gun violence, allowing each of the agency heads and the agencies to focus strictly on their mission, so that we can have a complete, public health-based, public health-driven, public safety strategy in Baltimore. Can you talk about how your feelings are on that topic?
Councilman, I'm certainly in favor of anything at all that will enhance our public safety efforts. I think any society or any government that solely relies on its police department to be responsible for public safety is doomed to failure. So I support any plan, any strategy that enhances the city's public safety strategy. Regarding firearms specifically, 2016 was the very first year in our history that we met, we tracked each and every gun arrest, each and every gun arrest, from the moment of arrest to final adjudication. So the arrests that were prosecuted and prosecuted successfully, when the judges found those defendants guilty, or the juries found those defendants guilty in 2016, 60% of the time, all or the majority of the sentences that our judges imposed on the defendants was suspended. So I think the Gun Violent Enforcement Division, that the state's attorney established, that we contribute a detective sergeant and five detectives, is a strategy that's working. I think our focus on violent repeat gun offenders is a strategy that's, that's working. Just because the outcomes aren't what we all want them to be at the moment, doesn't mean the strategy's not in place. So, so any coordinated effort within city government that helps put pressure where pressure needs to be placed, to, to hold gun offenders accountable is something that we're all, we're all in support of.
Thank you. My next question is to go back to the chair's comment about the helicopter. So, Mr. Klein, the other day, we had two questions, really. First, let's talk about the helicopter. So you said that there were options provided. So if, just a simple look in the budget book for me and several of my colleagues, we noticed that, for example, the Mounted Unit is just about the same amount of money as grounding one of the helicopters. Well, if you go an average, average citizen in Baltimore, they will say that, of course, the helicopter impacts more citizens than the Mounted Unit, because the Mounted Unit is limited in where they operate. Can you help us understand, because for the life of me, I can't understand why you, the mayor, whoever, would decide to put into the budget book that we're going to eliminate a helicopter when there are other services within the police department that have the same thing, that don't reach the same amount of citizens are available to be cut as well?
Again, we did this in collaboration with the Police Department. I think Commissioner Davis could talk about the benefits. He's talked about the benefits of the, of the Aviation Unit. I think he could talk about the benefits of the Mounted Unit.
There's no need for that. My second, my second question, Mr. Klein, you know that I asked earlier this week and last week about why the Police Department was not allowed to use Innovation Fund money for field-based reporting, because we know that it will help us save money if simply just from the overtime. And then to hear tonight Deputy Commissioner Johnson say publicly that that has been stalled due to funding, it would leave me and my colleagues to believe, again, this is another reason why they should have been allowed to do so. reason why they should have been allowed to do so. And again, in a city where we're cutting safe streets, where we're cutting after school, this is money that could have been used for other things that they now have to have in their budget because we refuse to use. This is innovative. Can you please explain to us officially why this is not something that could have been used for the innovation fund?
The, Councilman, the fiscal 14 budget provided $5 million for police information technology projects, and that was supposed to include field-based reporting. Police Department could talk about how that funding has been utilized. We are, we are now funding police base, or field-based reporting as part of the consent decree.
And that, that's my problem. You know that this council is holding a resolution. We don't feel like the Police Department, it's nothing against, of course, we all want the consent decree, we feel like that there are cost savings that can be had within the city government to provide services for consent decree required things before we allot them $10 million more dollars, including if they have to make technology improvements in the Police Department and we have or had an innovation fund, why can't, why can't those funds be used for that instead of adding more money into a budget that so many people already want to cut? We know that we have to find efficiencies in their department, and it seems to me that the administration and the mayor's, I mean, in the budget office is creating an inefficiency by allowing this to not happen.
First of all, I have not received a proposal from the Police Department to receive a, an innovation fund loan for that project. I do think that project is beyond what we currently have in the, in the innovation fund, and the Budget Committee has, has voted to eliminate funding for the innovation fund in, in fiscal 18.
I understand that, but also that you communicate with them. You understand that they have to do these technology improvements. You talk to them about that all the time. It couldn't have hurt to just say, hey, maybe we should look at the innovation fund. Because it seems to me if, just basic common sense, I'm not the smartest guy in the room, but if police officers are going from writing reports by hand, 30, 40, 50 a day, to being able to type them in, to their supervisors being able to read them faster, then we're going to spend less money on overtime, that's a cost savings to the cities, citizens of Baltimore, and it's going to allow officers to spend more times on the street.
Right.
That meets the qualifications in the innovation fund in my eyes.
And, and Councilman, we have had those kinds of conversations about this and other IT projects, but what it comes down to is, the agency has to be willing to commit that once that project, once that new technology's in place, that certain positions are going to be eliminated. That's the savings. And if we can't get there, then it, it doesn't work as an innovation fund project.
Commissioner, have you, do you have any thoughts about that?
Councilman, if I could give it to Chief Sturgis to follow up with some specifics.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Mr. Klein is correct. In fiscal 2015's budget, we did receive capital appropriation of $5 million for IT technology projects. Of that $5 million, two was programmed for field-based reporting. However, our need to roll out a full field-based reporting project would have been closer to $8 million. The $2 million covered maybe just to actual buy the mobile data terminals, just the computers in the vehicles. However, in, in order to have a successful field-based reporting, there needs to be the communication with our CAD system. So, there's this system upgrade, infrastructure upgrade that was required that costs several millions of dollars, which we did not have funding for. So, for the $2 million that was budgeted in fiscal 2015, we did begin the process of upgrading our infrastructure. Throughout the consent decree process, we did appeal to the state to request additional funding to help augment the gap that we had. We did receive the $2 million. Now that we have that, we're moving forward with purchasing the MDT, the mobile data terminals for the vehicles. And then the funds that are available in the capital budget, we will continue to pursue the upgrades of the infrastructure. And I can tag Ganeshah, if you're, if you want to add more to that. No? You're good.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair, can we actually request in writing from BBMR a detailed explanation of why none of the Police Department's technology requirements for the consent decree qualify for the innovation fund?
Yes, that'll be question 82.
And, and my last question, Mr. Commissioner, is either one for you or Deputy Commissioner Palmeri. I see that we still have a line for, two lines, line for Community Relations Section and line for Neighborhood Service Officers. With the moving of folks from CSD back to Patrol, can we talk about like what that division represents now? And if, you know, it's all in Patrol, but if we're going to, next year, defer to exactly where those people are now?
I'll, I'll start it, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to Deputy Commissioner Palmeri. We still have a Community Services Division. We reduced them greatly in size when we sent back 160 patrol officers to patrol from non-p patrol positions, and that was done right around February. So, we reduced them in, in size, but CSD still exists, and I think Chief Sturgis is finding the line item.
Yes, sir. For the Neighborhood Service Officers, I am aware of this. This has been brought up in the past several couple of years. We have adjusted the budget to zero that out. All of the funding is in Activity 3, which is the Community Relations Section. So, what you're seeing in the budget book is the actual spending of $257,000, which represents about two individuals that are charged to old legacy accounts, which we need to fix internally. And I'll pass it to the Deputy Palmeri if he wants to add anymore.
The only thing I'll add is, you know, in, in this fiscal year, we implemented the Neighborhood Coordination Officers within the Transformation Zones. Again, we went up to New York to visit that program. I think it's going to be a, a very productive program that we'll continue to invest in.
Thank you. And before I step out to speak at a graduation, Mr. Commissioner, I spoke with the Fire Chief about this yesterday, and it's something we've talked about before. I also think that it's critically important that we have a strong conversation about the utilization of 911 and making sure that folks understand and that we're allocating the resources for 911 for emergencies. 911 is an emergency number, and with the resources being so limited in both police and fire, it's important that we relay that message to the citizens, but also that we, as the agencies and inside government, are making sure that we are pushing that message out and that we're making sure that people understand what they should and shouldn't be calling 911. And I would challenge the Police Department to try to figure out something innovative like Chief Ford has with the nurse practitioners so that we can limit the abuse of 911 for non-emergency police situations.
Thank you, Councilman, and I'll challenge Chief TJ Smith to put his heads together with the Fire Department for some type of PR campaign, because just like the Fire Department has that number dialed far too often, we have, we have it done to us as well.
Commissioner Davis, is City Watch under one of these services?
No.
And, and so, does BPD play any role in, I guess, in, what, what, who, who's responsible for City Watch? I guess I should ask that.
So, the, the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, it's in their budget, and I'll ask Deputy Palmeri to describe it a little bit, but we staff it. We have a police lieutenant there, I think a couple more sworn, and some retirees that are under contract.
Yep. So, they're basically, it's, it's one sworn lieutenant that oversees the program itself, but it is staffed by a, a private company along with some contractual workers, most are retired officers. We do have light duties, utilize the cameras at times, too.
So, I think, so, the City Watch, well, CCTV cameras are listed as a future performance measure under Service 626. So, is that related to City Watch, or is that different cameras?
It, it is. It is, because we do operationally provide support for City Watch, so that's why the performance measure is one of ours. However, the funding is in the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice budget, and of course, there's a coordination between MOCJ, BPD, as well as MOIT, the Mayor's Office of Information Technology.
And part of the reason I'm asking is, the CCTV cameras are so critical to, to police How, how do we, I mean, I'm just talking from the Police Department, how do we allow Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice to go this long without providing some kind of data or some measurement on their efforts to expand the, the infrastructure? Because, you know, I, I know, I don't want to talk specifically about districts, but I know certain sections of Baltimore where the police would want to have cameras, you just can't put them there because the infrastructure's not in place.
Correct.
And so, not, not, so, somebody, somebody's got to put some pressure where it needs to be placed so that, you know, infrastructure investments are made, because right now they're, they're making communities more dangerous than they, than they need to be.
Councilman, I'll say, no matter what community I go to, and I'm sure everyone here, one of the top five questions is, can, can we get a City Watch camera? And the, the infrastructure availability is, is a challenge. We have about 750 CCTV cameras that, that we own throughout the city, about 250 more that are privately owned. It's one of the things that our city does better than most in the country, but it's, it's a critical piece of our crime fighting tool, and today's technology is so advanced that identifying people involved in criminal activity is, is much easier to do now than ever before, and the, the presence of a camera, much like a body worn camera, enhances the crime fight.
Right. And I don't know if this question is better for you or for Mr. Klein, and, you know, and excuse me for just not knowing what it means, but on many of the service areas, there's a note that says, "This budget reflects the reallocation of grant resources from unallocated funds to those corresponding with specific services and activities, as well as revised unallocated amounts based on anticipated awards." Can, can, can you explain to me what that means?
Yeah, I can talk about that. So, I think we talked yesterday or the day before about the fact that in some services, we will budget unallocated grant funding, and that's in cases where the agency believes, you know, they're planning to apply for a grant, but we don't know if they'll get it, and sometimes they may not even know exactly what grants they're applying for, but they're going to be actively applying. So, to avoid having to come, go through the process for supplemental appropriation every time, that's why we put unallocated. Then in future budgets, some funding will move from unallocated to specific grant numbers because they, they have gotten a grant, we know what it is, and, and so, whenever we have specific information about a grant, we, we use a detailed grant number versus unallocated.
Okay. And so, so that, that means that there's a significant part of the police budget that is unallo, under unallocated funds?
Yes, yes. Meaning that there will be appropriation.
You okay with that, Commissioner?
But they haven't, they haven't gotten the grants yet. They can't spend it until they actually get a grant.
Yeah, but, I mean, as I look through the, I mean, there's a lot that's unallocated. I mean, that.
Yeah, and you, you would.
And I'm not saying that we must have, clearly, we must have a very good track record at getting grants, because to, to put this much of public safety under unallocated funds must mean that we, we feel pretty good.
Yeah. And Councilman, you had asked for a full.
Yes.
List, and we're going to provide that to you, and that, that'll be throughout the entire budget of where we have unallocated grant appropriation.
And, and part of the reason I'm asking, and, and it leads to my, my last question, is that I believe about 10 years ago, the Housing Authority, we had Housing Authority Police, and it was a result of a federal grant. That grant went away, and Housing Authority Police went away, went away, correct?
Well, Housing Authority is not part of the city budget.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that, but, but they were providing a service in a critical area for, for law enforcement. And so, you know, let's use Gilmore Homes, for example. And so, we have not had that, you know, in that area for a decade, and I'm not saying that Gilmore Homes would look different, I'm not, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, but it probably would have been different if, you know, that service was provided from some other entity. So, I think that's why I keep bringing up the unallocated funds, because they, they are critical services attached to these unallocated funds, and if we don't have a strategy of when these, you know, when and if these funds go away.
Right.
Then we leave whole communities, you know, vulnerable.
Yep.
Because now, now the service isn't being met.
Right. And, and as you know, we, we rely heavily on state and federal grants, and when they go away, it's a challenge. I mean, we, I, I've talked about our practice of, the expectation that we, we tell our agencies to have is that, you know, if grant funding goes away, the service, the service has to go away, and, and there have been exceptions to that, that rule, but, but that's what, that's the expectation that we ask agencies to have.
Okay.
Councilman Slipher.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming in, Mr. Commissioner and crew. I got a couple of, of thoughts. I actually have a lot more, but I'm going to be brief because of sun setting. So, the first thing I just want to state, you know, you mentioned about the perception, the perception of our city, the perception of our Police Department, the perception of everything. And, you know, what, what message would, is it sending when you walk into City Hall or you walk into the Police Department, and you have, you know, RoboCops in there, you have just a security company hired by whomever, wherever, wearing whatever uniforms they're wearing? I mean, it just, it sends a terrible message. I know I've, I actually walked into the Police Department not long ago, and I think you guys are already piloting this program. You have like security guards there?
We've hired them.
You've hired them? Okay. So, you walk in there, I mean, it's, it really is an uneasy feeling when you walk into the Police Department, and I could just imagine the feeling of myself and my colleagues when we walk into City Hall, and that's who we're relying on to protect us. And so, it, it really is a, it is a major problem, and if you think back to, you know, that councilperson who was killed on the job, you know, in city, in, in the makeshift City Hall at the time, I mean, it's a really scary thought, and, you know, to what, to what expense are we putting, you know, value on, you know, on our team, on our city, and on our people, which, which leads into my other thing, and that's the helicopter, which I think you guys have heard loud and clear, but, you know, there's, there's a cost, there's a cost benefit analysis to everything you do. This is the second to last thing, and I've read through your budget, this is the second to last thing I would cut in your budget. The last thing I cut is the crime lab, okay? And then this is the second to last. And when you look at the helicopter and you talk about just the basic numbers, how you respond to 40,000 calls for service on the helicopter, putting aside all the, the other things that the helicopter does as far as homeland security and everything else, and you figure cutting just 25% of that, which, 10,000 calls, let's just say. So, when you figure that at a cost of 1.28 million, I mean, you're talking about, you know, $125 a call. I mean, I mean, it's a relatively low cost per every call of service. And when you look at the incidents that occur, that there's high-speed chases, and we just look at in our city, I think the worst things that ever happen is when these innocent lives are, are lost. I mean, nobody in this room doesn't think about Mackenzie Elliott and others who are just innocent bystanders to a lot of the violence, and it doesn't take, you know, watching more than two or three YouTube videos of, of high-speed chases to find that without the use of a helicopter, you're putting innocent lives on the line. And so, whatever the cost is, and this cost is relatively low, I thought the cost would be higher, I mean, it's, it's reckless. I mean, it really is, we are putting innocent lives on the line in our city. And, you know, we've made great strides in, in some of the transformation zones, and we still have a lot of work to do, we all agree on that. But, you know, when you look at just people driving down the street, taking, you know, going, going to the grocery store, and you see these accidents that occur, or you see them, you know, all these different things that could happen, that could have been avoided had there been a helicopter in the air, had that call, had that situation been de-escalated, had it been slowed down, it makes a big difference. And, and I, I've seen the worst accidents are as a result of chases, and that's when we're losing human lives, and I think that, you know, it's really, at 1.28 million, it's actually embarrassing that we're considering cutting a police helicopter. Now, I'm sure there's plenty of other places, not just in the Police Department, and many of the agencies that there's room to cut, but, you know, I don't, I don't really care who, who cut it, because it doesn't make a difference to me. I just care about who's going to put it back, and that's, that's the only responsible thing that anybody in this room could do.
Councilman, if I could just respond regarding your comments, and I know you're watching the sunlight, about the aviation program and building security, police officers, when we're challenged to identify $5.5 million from our budget, it is very, very difficult to achieve that without laying off employees. So, I, I know there's a public sentiment out there that, that may seem to look at our budget and think there's a lot of fat on the bone. I can tell you there's not. So, to identify a $5.5 million reduction was a very difficult thing to do, especially when we knew we, we couldn't afford to lose police officers or lay police officers off. So, I, I certainly understand your sentiments regarding aviation and, and building security.
Just a follow-up on that, before I- Just a follow-up on that, before I ask my questions, it would make more sense to me to cut the security down at the stadium and the security at the casino, rather than to cut the security here at City Hall. So whoever made that cut is unacceptable to this council. And like Councilman Slipher said, Councilman Leonie was killed, Councilman Kern was shot, well, he had a heart attack. And, you know, we value our lives here in this building as well. We don't know anything about which security company you're looking to use or anything of that nature. Let's cut executive protection, okay? For you, for the mayor, and for the state's attorney. And keep those officers right here in City Hall. Now, if you want to cut, cut those, okay? You're the commissioner, you have a gun, you have a driver who drive you around, so you don't need executive protection. We can cut back on the mayor's executive protection, and we also can cut back on the state's attorney's executive protection. We want officers here. The mayor's protected, the state's attorney's protected, and you're protected. We are not, and we want to be protected. So any kind of way that you can find within your existing budget, which I know you can, those officers who are charged with protecting City Hall, we don't want moved. All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think my only response to that, and I certainly understand where you're coming from, is I-
If you don't, we'll cut it.
Well, Mr. President, you, I'm sure know this, I have two police officers on my executive protection, and when I got here, there were six. So I understand the importance of making those decisions. I've in fact made them, and am willing to look at anything we can to ensure everyone's safety.
Well, I'm the number two in the city of Baltimore. I have none. And I get threatened all the time. I have no protection. Anything happens to the mayor, I'm the mayor. But yet I have no protection, okay? I'm out late at night, I'm at meetings, I'm calling in complaints from drug dealers, and they know it. And I've been threatened, I'm not afraid, but I've been threatened. Don't you think I want security as well? Give us the security in City Hall. I don't have it, we can have it for the council.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hear you loud and clear, and I know you and I have had personal conversations about executive protection for you, and if you'd like to revisit that, I'm certainly willing to have that conversation.
I would like to revisit it for us here.
I'll do both with you.
How much of the police department budget will cover crime prevention?
Well, Mr. President, everything, that's a tough question. Crime prevention begins and ends with patrol officers. And as you're aware, Mr. President, and the rest of the council, one of the biggest challenges to our overtime expenditures is the fact that our patrol shift plan was negotiated in collective bargaining and inserted into a collective bargaining agreement. That's relatively unheard of in American policing. So when that happened, the collective bargaining agreement stands, and still stands, and requires the police department to have a four days on, three days off shift plan. And we never had the number of police officers needed to staff that in the first place. And then the riots and the unrest of 2015 hit, and we only graduated one academy class, and attrition became an issue. And we've been challenged with staffing a shift patrol plan that doesn't work for us. But I can't hurl a lightning bolt at it because it's inserted into the collective bargaining agreement. So we're engaged in some good faith negotiations right now with the FOP to hopefully change that. Because more police officers on the street in marked patrol cars, that's where crime prevention begins.
How many police officers are still on extended medical leave? We'd like to have a list of that, and how long they have been on. Because any other, and I think I said this to you before at other hearings, when a city worker gets hurt on a job, they give them a certain amount of time to either come back to work, or find another job, or they force them to retire, either on disability, or they don't have a job. We cannot continue to carry police officers on medical leave for two and three and four years. Unacceptable. They need to find another job if they can't perform that.
So, Mr. President, I believe you're aware that the FOP contract, again, collective bargaining, has a role to play with this. And we now have 209 police officers on light duty, and we're hopeful that we're in a position to have a better relationship with our medical provider, because those are the doctors that determine duty status. I don't determine duty status. So we have 209 on light duty, we have 63 on medical duty, which means no duty whatsoever. They're not coming to work. We have 47 who are suspended, and I cut that in half in two years. And we have 16 on military leave. So all those transitional vacancies add up, and they certainly impact-
So what doctors, at Mercy?
Yes, sir.
Because they're quick to tell the citizens who, citizens of Baltimore that work for Department of Transportation, Department of Public Works, Recreation and Parks, that they have to either come back to work. So I'm going to ask the chair of, I'm going to ask the Judiciary Committee to call in the provider at Mercy to find out why there's double standards.
Yes, sir.
Because if they're not fit for duty, then they shouldn't be working. You know, I mean, that's taking, putting money on the books, and we don't have officers in the street. Okay, can you inform the council on the police department's status of implementing the community policing strategy?
So, Mr. President, I mentioned a little bit earlier that we reduced the size of the Community Collaboration Division earlier this year, because we were at a very critical point in terms of our patrol staffing. In terms of the community engagements that we are still very actively involved in, in spite of the staffing challenges that we have, and our staffing challenges are very real. We have 500 fewer police officers in Baltimore in 2017 than we had in 2012, 500. In spite of that, we have a police chaplains program that's very robust, and it's run by Chief Melvin Russell. We practically had zero police chaplains before the unrest, and now we have over 130. Outward Bound, that's another community engagement strategy. Every Baltimore police officer in 2016 spent a full day at Leaking Park with a young person in the outward bound experience. We have police officers who volunteer to coach for NFL 60. We participate in Bigs in Blue. All these things are new. For the last three or four years, we've been participating in a local nonprofit that supports academically underperforming students called Thread. A number of us here in Chambers volunteer and read. And we have a basketball league that's in its third summer. Building Bridges is something that's been going on for two years, and that's an after-school program targeting middle school students. Inspector Rich Worley runs Badges for Baseball. The BPD was conspicuously absent from Badges for Baseball for a number of years, and we're now involved in Badges for Baseball. Police Explorers, we've almost doubled the number of police explorers since the unrest. We participated in a Shooting for Peace event last year at Coppin. We have a Women in Law Enforcement that we think's part of the community outreach, reading partners. We're hiring 10 more youth workers this summer than we did last summer, so we'll have a total of 30. We are starting a Youth Citizens Academy, much like our Citizens Police Academy, but for young people. I have a Youth Advisory Board, and this is also new, bridging officers and students with swimming. We have our police officers who swim with their young people. So all those events in and of themselves might seem like just one thing that the BPD does, but combined, in its totality, it represents a concerted community policing effort. But it's, the Police Museum just opened, and that's open two days a week to the community, every Friday and every Saturday. But I've always been a proponent that community policing begins and ends with the interaction that police officers have with our residents. So the heart of community policing, in my book, has always been the respectful interactions between police officers and all of our citizens. And we've added a 40-hour curriculum to our police academy, and we've called it Foot Patrol Curriculum. And basically, it teaches communication skills to our police officers. Every academy class for the last six classes since I've been police commissioner has walked 90 days exclusively of Foot Patrol, and we think that's part of our community policing strategy as well, Mr. President.
Okay. Service 622, Police Patrol, on page 334. According to the Performance Measure Chart on 334, the amount of time that patrol officers spend on proactive policing is 14%. What is the department doing to shift police officers to be more proactive?
So, you got, so again, sir, you know, with the staffing shortages that we're currently experiencing, again, optimally, we want minimally 60% of discretionary time for patrol officers. We're functioning at the rate of about 80% of discretionary time. Some of the things that we've implemented recently, just this summer, that we believe, and just let me back up, we cover 143 posts citywide on any given shift. So when you look at staffing those properly, the amount of service time is spent on calls for service obviously hinders their interactions or self-promoted policing.
Okay. Because lots of time, I see police officers, they're sitting in the cars, it might be two, it might be four, they're talking to each other, and they end certain lots, and right up the street is drug dealing and crime. And I think I mentioned this to the Commissioner on numerous occasions. What are we doing to get the officers out of the cars, walking, engaging the citizens? Because that's being proactive.
Absolutely. And to your point, you know, I'm out there quite frequently, Inspector Worley, the district commanders. When we see something that appears where an officer's sitting in a car, he may be writing a report, he may be handling a call for service, but we certainly inquire as to what they're doing, and we continue to deliver expectations of what we expect them to do. We've implemented an inspections component within patrol, so that inspection component goes through each independent district. They're actively looking for hotspots within zones, the district commander zones, and they're monitoring the activity of police officers. As we mentioned before, the mobile data terminals that are equipped with the basically GPS technology will also have an impact for a first-line supervisor, not only to account for the officer's time on call, but also their discretionary time and where exactly they are. So that's why we're really looking forward to that technology moving forward, because in essence, we have to do it the manual way right now.
Okay. Well, I can tell you for a fact, and I guess I'll start taking videos to show it to you, because they're not writing reports, they're just sitting in the cars. I'm telling you what I see and what I know. All right. Service 623, page 338. The Performance Measure Chart on this page showed the violent crime clearance rate declined to 20%, and the homicide clearance rate declined to 28%. There's a note that says that the number are lower due to a different formula. Can you explain to the council the changes in calculating the clearance rate?
So, Mr. President, I'm trying to read the small print. I can tell you where we are right now. Our homicide clearance rate at the end of calendar year 2015 was 31%. Our homicide clearance rate at the end of calendar year 2016 was just under 38%. And as of today, we're over 50%. Fifty-
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven percent. That's an enormous improvement that I think the entire city should be proud of, because we were only able to close a number of those cases because the community has stepped up. We've, at the end of 2016, we calculated an increase in homicide tips alone at 116%. So that's thanks primarily to a text, a tip feature that Chief Smith added to our public relations arsenal. And an increase in homicide tips of 116% is nothing to sneeze at. We think we put some internal processes in place and some relationship mechanisms in place with the state's attorney's office, that we're seeing homicide and non-fatal shooting warrants being approved at a much faster rate than they had in the past. But we pay attention to that clearance rate daily, so if there's other numbers there that appear to be different than that, I'm not sure what they are.
And if I could just add, our homicide arrest numbers compared to last year have increased by 56%.
Okay, so the numbers in the book are probably wrong. We're used to that anyway.
I'm sorry, sure, I can address that. So the numbers in the book represent fiscal 2016, which ended on June 30th of 2016, as the Commissioner reported. So the number in the book is actual of 28%. However, the year ended in 2016 at 38%, which would have been calendar year ending December 31st of 2016. So that would explain the difference in the numbers that you're seeing in the book versus where we ended for the end of the year. There's a difference between fiscal year and calendar year.
Oh, could you give that information to the committee?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Service 637, Special Operations, K-9 and Mounted Unit. In regards to the Performance Measure Chart in this particular service, can you provide the council with a breakdown of how many arrests were assisted by the Mounted Unit versus the K-9 Unit? Please provide this information for the past five years. We'd like to have that information.
I'm not sure that we have that specific information, but Major Corbett will certainly compile that, and we'll get it back.
Okay, thank you. And my final question-
You got last year, I'm sorry, we got last year, Mr. President, if you want last year.
Okay, we'll take whatever you have. Just make sure you get it to the committee.
Yes, sir.
Whatever data you have with the K-9 Unit versus the Mounted Unit. Just get that information to us.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Last question, overtime. Who is responsible for monitoring the overtime in each police district? Who authorized it? Who monitors whether the overtime is being used to patrol, or whether it's used to be just sitting around? We don't want officers, you know, Mr. Commissioner, I told you, I don't mind paying overtime if we see it reducing crime. But just to see officers sitting around and not engaging the community, just sitting in cars is not what we want. We want them out and about, and we want them engaging the community. That's community policing, as far as I'm concerned. But I want to know, who oversees overtime? And are they checking it? Because what I've read about the lieutenant at the horseshoe, and other issues that we have heard about, is very troubling.
So, Mr. President, that, there's a lot to be said about overtime. And I think it was back on April the 4th of this year that Drew Vetter gave an overtime presentation to the Public Safety Committee that was probably the most comprehensive in certainly recent years. And overtime in any police department is a normal thing. And if overtime goes toward enhancing the crime fight and getting a clearance rate like homicide has this year of 57%, I think we all agree that overtime is a necessary evil in our profession, because we deal with human behaviors, and we can't often predict human behaviors and unanticipated critical events, to include crimes. But I do want to acknowledge, again publicly, that corruption, mismanagement, abuse has occurred here for many, many years. And there are seven police officers who are sitting in federal jails across this country awaiting trial, partly because of their involvement, amongst other things, in overtime abuse, criminal overtime abuse scandal. The lieutenant that we just suspended last week, and I have to be careful what I say about this, because it's a pending-
I understand. You don't even have to go into it.
But I'll say this, Mr. President-
This is some of the things that-
We identified him. We identified internally, we identified him, and we locked him up. He didn't get indicted. The BPD put handcuffs on him. We're the ones who arrested him.
But the point I'm trying to make, Mr. Commissioner, who is responsible for assigning the overtime and making sure that they're working it? That's all I want to know.
Yes, sir. So it begins and ends with- So, it begins and ends with patrol sergeants, and there's checks and balances, and we just revised our overtime policy and approval. The challenges that we have with overtime are a lot structural challenges. Again, the patrol shift schedule that we can't staff. Every day, we know we have a patrol shift schedule that we can't staff, and that's, it's not normal to have that inserted into a collective bargaining agreement. So, there's a technology fix to all of this. The mayor has, or is putting into place an audit that's going to identify undoubtedly, at least to me, some IT solutions to our paper process. It should be virtually impossible to say you were somewhere and us not to know whether or not you're telling the truth. And IT, I think, is going to solve that for us.
Okay. I just feel that we should work as hard as we can to get that FOP contract reversed, where you would be in charge of scheduling. Because we're at the point now of calling out the FOB for the crime in the city of Baltimore, because of their schedule. You know? Because if you're the commissioner, you can't control your schedule, then that's a problem. And I doubt if any other police department in this state have that issue. Only us and Baltimore City.
You're correct, Mr. President. Chief's turn.
Okay. So, sir, I just wanted to add in regarding the IT solutions that the department is looking into and moving forward on expeditiously, is we are looking at automating our timekeeping process, which should help in some of this authorizing of the overtime. There's three solutions in particular that we're looking at. We are looking at the biometric time clocks, where individuals will have to use their thumbprint to clock in. We are also looking at the solution of the web application for those who have desktop, and we are also looking at a mobile app, smartphone, mobile app solution with a geo-fencing. So, individuals, as they are reporting to a crime scene, they can sign on with their smartphone, but there will be their geo-fencing solution, which ensures that they are not too far away from where they say they are. So, that is the technology solution that the department is looking at. That will be implemented in fiscal 2018, hopefully before the end of this calendar year.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to take a moment to thank Charm City TV. They've been recording these hearings all week and shifted their schedule around, so we really appreciate it on the council. And the great thing about Charm TV is that they put all of their hearings, all of our hearings, on YouTube, which means you can go back and listen to those hearings. So, when you're recounting a story, you can go on there, and you'll know exactly what was said. So, Mr. Klein, you just told me that the thirteen point two million was intended to go to bridge the gap funding, okay? Now, when did the mayor make that commitment with the General Assembly? When did the mayor make the twenty-two point four million dollar commitment, and Delegate McIntosh made the thirteen point nine million dollar commitment, right? And then the governor came through with a supplemental, maybe twenty-two point eight, if my math is correct, right? That happened in April, right? Okay. So, let me bring your attention to this YouTube video from our Budget Committee hearing on May sixteenth, okay? And this is your deputy director, Bob Sennemy.
Get back to your question, Mr. Chair. With the surplus, the thirteen point two million dollars, if it materializes, because this is still a projection, and it could come in at that amount, a little bit less, a little bit more, but if that surplus materializes, what we're proposing to do is to put it towards these categories, to beef up our FNP pension litigation contingency fund, to make sure we have the full amount covered, and to throw more at the PCPS line for surplus schools and debt service, which will be used to redevelop or demo those buildings that we have.
Why would we take that money? Can you remind me where FNP pension and school debt service, what accounts those are in? Those are in fund balance?
So, the fire and police, what Mr. Sennemy is referring to is, within our assigned fund balance, we have a contingency in the event that we lose the fire and police pension litigation. That would require us to make retroactive payments to the pensioners. It would be the difference...
Mr. Klein, you're...
Counselor, can I...
Hold on, Mr. President, if I may. You're confusing the facts, okay? There's a fund balance. There are three assignments within that fund balance. Fifty point zero million dollars for fire and police pension, number one. Number two, seventeen point six million dollars for school building surplus debt service. Number three, two point five million dollars for body cameras, for a grand total of seventy point one million dollars. Mr. Klein, your deputy director, a month after the mayor made that commitment, said that that thirteen point two million dollar surplus, if it was realized, keeping in mind that number is current as of March thirty-one, was going to fund balance. And you told me today that you never said that, and that your department never said that, but I got it on the YouTube tape right here, and I can't understand at what point in the decision-making process you magically decided, maybe it came down in a helicopter, that you were not going to put that money in fund balance, and that that money's going to bridge the gap funding for a commitment that the mayor made a month and a half ago. Mr. President, I got to tell you, I got good mind to talk to you after this about bringing him in front of my judiciary committee, subpoenaing him, and putting him under oath, because it seems like you can't seem to find a way to tell this committee the truth. You're hiding stuff over here. You got the money for the benefits over here, and the fringe over here, and there's always an issue with the budget book. None of the numbers are correct, and I can't understand, when you get a simple question, a simple question about where you said you were putting that money, you're lying to this council about it, Mr. President.
Well, you just summed it up, because we argued the point that we didn't want the money to go into fund balance. We wanted to... It's already, what, seventy-something million dollars in there?
Seventy point one.
And they haven't even used any of that money, not a dime of it, and we steady growing that pot. We're steady growing the... Good God, I'm so going upset, I almost cursed again. But we're growing money into our stabilization fund, okay? We keep putting money there. I mean, we're just putting money away and away and away, and I do agree that we need to put money away in case something major happened, but nothing has happened. The worst thing that happened to us was Snowmageddon, okay? And we got reimbursed for most of that by the federal government. We just need this money. This was the easiest budget that we could have done. Thirteen point one million in surplus money. We could have had this budget done. Everybody could have been happy, standing up saying rah rah rah. We worked together to get it done, but yet we're fighting. And at the end of the day, we're going to have close to, what, forty-something million?
Right now, we have fifteen and a half million cuts, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair, in the same hearing, we explained that there would be...
Mr. Klein, I'm not interested... Mr. Klein, I'm...
Fifty million dollars in fiscal eighteen.
Mr. Klein, I am chair of the committee. Mr. Klein, you're out of order. Mr. Klein, I'm not going to tell you again that you're out of order. This is my committee, not your committee. The president has the floor. Mr. President.
Yes. And I just feel that, you know, this whole process has been disingenuous. I don't have time to be sitting in here fussing and arguing and fighting for the same priorities that the mayor has as well. These are our children, our citizens, and the things that are important to this body. None of us up here wanted to sit here and make cuts. We want to move forward, but if we don't get our priorities met, these budget cuts will stand, and the supplementals that come in here are not going anywhere. So, we want to let you know we're serious about our business today, and we are not going to stand for nothing less than our priorities being met. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any supplementals that come in, you can consider, they're just going in a drawer and collecting dust moving forward. If this is the type of cooperation we're going to get from BBMR, I just can't understand it. And Commissioner, quite frankly, I appreciate the fact that you got a job to do, but I am sick and tired of this BBMR making operational decisions. You are not a police commander. And further, I'm sick and tired of you making political decisions. You are not an elected official. I don't know how often we got to go through this. It's the same song and dance every single time in front of this committee. BBMR has absolutely no respect for this council. Councilman Henry.
Before I start, I just wanted to say to the chief, of the three different solutions you're looking at to do the better time card management, I would encourage the biometric route, because while I was sitting here listening to you, I thought of ways to beat the other two, but I still haven't been able to think of a way to beat the biometric one, so that would be my vote.
Okay. The only reason for the third one is that we do have a mobile workforce, so when officers do have to respond to the scene, we don't have the...
I know, it's a tough one. It's just that the smartphone thing, I'm like, here, sign me in, you know, or take my phone, and, you know, I worry.
We're looking to it.
I worry that there'd be way...
Okay.
But I... Listen, thank you very much for the fact that you're trying to find a good way around it. I appreciate it. Service six twenty-two, police patrol. Oh, and I'm sorry, before I begin, Commissioner, I'm looking at you, but I'm speaking to your whole staff when I say, I'm looking for short answer, not essay, like this is, these aren't tough ones. These are just like basic data things. I'm reading the service description for six twenty-two, which says it consists of the nine police districts. This is patrol, and the units assigned to patrol are sector patrol units, administrative unit, inner harbor unit, casino mini district, downtown foot deployment and operations units, and patrol also is responsible for the adult and juvenile booking facilities. The page in our budget book, the agency detail for service six twenty-two aggregates all of those different units. Could we get this page but broken down, so we can see how many of each officers, how many of each sergeant, lieutenant, captain, and so on, are assigned to each of the nine police districts, and then inside that, how many are assigned to sector patrol, how many are assigned to inner harbor, and so on? I can kind... I'm guessing I can recognize the casino mini district, because it's, I'm guessing that's the special fund one, but I might be just guessing. So, can we... Unless somebody actually has that right here to submit to the committee, can we make that something that you turn into us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Hang on. Councilman Henry, what number are we on? That's eighty-three. Uh, Councilman, can you please repeat the documentation request?
Yes. What I would be looking for would be the service salaries and wages for permanent full-time funded positions in service six twenty-two, broken down by the various units assigned to patrol as per the service description.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Now, just a quick data question. In that list, there are only eight majors, but we have nine districts. What am I missing?
Counselor, you're not missing anything. We just made promotions.
Oh, okay. All right. So, there...
Nine majors, one district.
Okay, but you've only budgeted for eight.
Well...
That's what I'm saying. It's like there's only eight budget positions for majors in patrol.
Okay. Well, we have nine.
Yeah. We definitely had nine. We had some reorganizations, so we just have to clean up the budget for that.
Do we get to give you suggestions on who's working for free, or...
[laughing]
Okay. So, you'll get cleared up.
Yes. I think that's just something we gotta clean up.
What are community service officers? Because they don't look like they're paid enough to be actual police officers.
Those administrative... They are administrative positions.
In each, out in the districts? Okay.
Yes, yes. They are civilians, and they're scattered throughout the department.
Okay. Now, service, moving on to service six thirty-seven, the K-9 and mounted unit. Several of my colleagues have spoken to the mounted unit, and I will not beat a... Yeah, okay, all right. I will just, I'll stop there. But, listen, I'm a dog person. I like dogs and all, but I'm a little curious on why we need twenty-five. What, I mean, how, they're clear, they're not part of patrol, so they are not on a, like, twenty-four, seven rotational thing.
Counselor, there's different types of dogs, and with two major stadiums in the city, explosive canines, we have a number of explosive detection dogs, we have a number of drug dogs, narcotic dogs, and they participate in interdiction activities throughout the city. And then you have the patrol K-9 dogs, and I think that's typically what people think of when they hear canine. You have the patrol dog, but we also have explosive detection dogs.
There are, excuse me, there are K-9 units that are patrolling in neighborhoods?
Sir, if I can, they fall under Special Operations Section, that's why they're under that service. However, they do work within the nine districts. So, they communicate on the same channel, they're not assigned under District Command for obvious reasons. They have a specialty skill that really needs to be, has, have strict oversight. So, that's why they're centralized under Special Operations, but they are support function, they operate within the districts, they monitor the radio channels, they respond to calls for service, they back up patrol officers, and so forth.
Okay. Now, I swear to you, I mean this totally seriously, but with the dogs that some are used for explosive searches, some are used for narcotics, is it possible to cross-train dogs? You can't have them learn to recognize both?
It's not a best practice. So, in the past, we have had dogs that were cross-trained, but best practices will show that that is not the, that is unreliable.
And Counselor, on top of that, it provides criminal defense attorneys a very easy challenge when it gets to court, because they can make an easy argument that the dog isn't as specialized as we say it is.
I can get that. What, now, as a follow-up, though, is it not possible to have one human being work with more than one dog? It's like, why do you need a... Because it appears from the salary, I mean, the position breakdown, it looks like there's a person in this unit for every horse and for every dog, and is it not possible to have one person...
I'll say this, there are some jurisdictions, large police departments, that have one K-9 handler assigned to two dogs, and typically, it's a patrol dog, and it's a...
Specialty dog.
A narcotic dog or a bomb dog. That requires larger vehicles, typically large SUVs, to be able to transport them around together at the same time. So, and we don't...
Why would you have to bring both dogs with you?
Because you don't know what you're going to be called to do during your course of duty, necessarily.
Oh, right, because those are the patrol, like, no, here's what I mean, is if you've got, like, so if you've got twenty-five dogs, how many of them are explosives, how many of them are narcotics, and how many of them are patrol?
We have nine explosive dogs. The rest of them are CDS dogs.
Nine C... Okay, I'm sorry. Nine explosive and sixteen CDS.
That's correct.
So, I guess what I'm saying is, if you... So, none of them are just strictly patrol dogs?
We use all of them for, we can use all of them for patrol, but the specialty is, if there's a call for a bomb threat, we prefer to send a dog that's been specifically trained for those types of...
I get that.
That's correct.
Why couldn't that dog just stay back at the kennel, and you go get him when you get an explosive call?
The dog must stay with the handler. That is the best practice, and the reason why is that dog is adjusted or familiar with that trainer or that handler. It's very difficult to have three handlers to handle one dog.
Okay. All right.
It gets into a lot of courtroom credibility issues when we go to use these dogs and make arrests.
Can you repeat the light duty numbers that you did earlier? There was the light duty, there's medical duty, and there's suspension.
So, as of the end of May, and these, Counselor, you know, these numbers change daily, but we have two hundred and nine police officers as of the end of May on light duty. We have sixty-three on medical leave. We have forty-seven who are suspended administratively, and again, that number's cut in half, and we have sixteen that are deployed in the military. We made such great strides with cutting our suspended officer list in half. I'm convinced we can do that with light duty and medical duty as well, but we can't do that on our own. We have to do that in conjunction with Mercy and the FOP, because there's a contractual obligation in there that we have to comply with.
Assuming that these numbers are across the entire police department and not just patrol, is that correct?
Correct.
Could we also get as eighty... What are we up to?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four. Could we get it to eighty-four? Could we get that list broken down by how many from patrol? many from patrol in each of those categories?
Yes, sir.
Okay, 'cause, like, just looking at this, you're well over ten percent of the force is on there, and I'm just curious as to whether, I would like to believe that a disproportionate number of these are coming from patrol, which is good and bad, because patrol is at most at risk of, you know, different kinds of injuries and such, but it also means that patrol then is even greater under, even further under strength.
Yeah, I can, if you want the numbers, I can read them to you, so, for police patrol, give me one second here, I'm, I don't have my glasses. So, police patrol for limited duty, that's light duty work, we have sixty-eight.
Oh, that's not bad.
That, this is police officer, so, that, this doesn't include supervisors. So, for those that are medical, we have forty-two.
Okay.
Those that are suspended, we're looking at sixteen total.
That's also good.
Detailed out.
Military?
Uh, yeah, so detailed out full duty would be twenty-two, detailed out light duty would be about seven, it looks like.
Okay, so, detailed out, the number of patrol is higher than the total number?
I'm sorry?
The, the number that was said, quoted for military was sixteen, did I hear, did I mishear that?
So, I'm sorry, milit, military is seven.
Oh, okay, gotcha, all right.
Yes.
And, and so the twenty-two is something else?
Yes, so the twenty-two is officers that are detailed out full duty, which means basically, they've, they're in a transfer phase, promotional phase, that were rectifying, reconciling, next doing, it's pay period to pay period, basically.
So, just to clarify, that is not medical?
Right.
Full duty detailed out, that twenty-two, so please don't include that, because we were talking about medical?
Gotcha.
And that twenty-two is a full duty that is detailed out of patrol?
Ah, okay, to somewhere else, I got you.
Yes.
Correct.
For communications, my understanding, and I, I'm sorry to say I got this understanding from the internet and social media, so that's why I'm talking to you guys, our radio system was down yesterday, and the word on the street was that BPD had no backup for the radio system being down, can you provide some reassurance that not everything on social media is true?
It's not true.
So, the, so, I'll handle that, so, the, the, the cause of the, of the failure, first off, it had to do with a mistake in uploading some software by our vendor, which is Motorola, we met extensively with them today and went through it, seemed to be basically a freak accident that's never happened before, but human error essentially is what happened. Now, as to the backup plan, there, there was a backup, a backup was used, because it's a backup, it's not the best way, it's not a way-
What, what's, what is the backup?
There's a mutual aid channel that works citywide, so we had to put all of the units temporarily, and I mean, by temporary, I mean a matter of several minutes, on a citywide channel, so every single-
Oh, okay.
-police officer on one channel, which you could never do for an extended period of time, but you can do it for a short period of time to give instructions as to what to do next.
Gotcha.
After a fairly short period of time, the system essentially reboots itself, which is called failsoft, failsoft works as a radio system, again, it doesn't work as well, officers were able to return to their normal district channels, but dispatchers had to use handheld portable radios like police officers carry, dispatchers had to use those same radios, and so we were in that condition for about, failsoft for roughly an hour, and then the system was completely restored and we were back up and running. So, there was no service interruption, there were no priority calls for service that couldn't be answered, there was no extended period of time that police officers couldn't communicate with each other or with the dispatcher. Again, met with Motorola, obviously had to fix the problem yesterday, we called them in today, us and the fire department, and had an extended conversation with them today about causes and, and ways that we can prevent this in the future, and also, as a side note, there was a lot of conversation about having a better backup plan than we had, and we had one, we employed it, it worked, but there's always room for improvement, and we expect to do better.
Thank you for the reassurance, the last thing I would say, Mr. Chair, is, well, first of all, you know, thank you all for your service, and Commissioner, please, to almost everyone in your force, thank you for your service, and I, I mean that seriously, because, you know, you have some jerks, but it's hard to not have that in a three-thousand-person organization, some of us are in significantly smaller organizations, and recognize the challenge. I, I would say, though, I would like to, I would take issue with one of the statements you made earlier, that crime prevention begins and ends with patrol officers, I would hope that, that you would mean that statement as hyperbole to show support for your patrol guys, because I would understand the importance of doing so, but I would hope you would also recognize that crime prevention really begins with people not needing or wanting to commit crimes, and I mean this seriously when I say, I don't believe we should be relying on the police department for crime prevention, you know, you guys, the, the, the part of crime prevention that police address is the opportunity part, you guys don't prevent means, and you guys don't prevent motive, and there are other organizations, both in and out of city government, that really are better equipped to address motive, and what I will say, though, and this is where it's a challenge for you and for us, is finding the balance in we, how we allocate limited resources to addressing that, because everybody wants our kids to be great kids, and we want to give them the best possible opportunities, and those opportunities aren't free, giving kids meaningful things to do with their time so that you guys don't have to chase them is something that requires resources, and, and it is a, it's a tough call for government, and it's a tough call for society as a whole to balance the investing in the future so that we're not scared in the future with investing in tonight, because people go to lots of meetings and they talk about how important it is to invest in our kids, but then when they get home, and it's night, and they look outside and they're scared, they call the police, and if you're getting one-point-two million, is that still the number, we're looking at, one-point-two million calls for service, is that up, is that down?
Yeah, total numbers is one-point-two million into nine-one-one, however, the police responds to about eight-hundred-and-thirty.
The, the-
So far this year, it's four-hundred thousand calls we respond to.
That's actually, that, that sounds good.
It's down from last year, but up from eleven-twelve this year.
But as long as the people of Baltimore feel like they have to call the police for every single thing that they see, it's gonna be hard for, it's gonna be hard for people in City Hall making database decisions to attribute more resources to true prevention and less to response, and that's the thing, because we, we want the response, but it's, the response, in all fairness, is more expensive than the prevention.
Right. Councilman, I think I've extensively been on the record, very progressively, I, I agree with you, and I hope that we get there one day as a society, but in the meantime, the demands of, of our police department continue to grow and grow and grow, we are the profession that is in the, that can't say no business, and, and that's a challenge for us, so, while we have five-hundred fewer cops, some people might look at that as a good thing, but there hasn't been a reduction in the demands for police services over the past five years.
And, and Commissioner, that's our job, our job is to say no, our job is to turn to our constituents and say, "No, we can't keep relying on the police to do everything, we have to do something else."
I'd be glad to be put out of business.
[laughing] Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Davis, I just wanted to follow up quickly on one of Councilman Henry's previous questions, so, if Scooby-Doo was on the K-9 unit, would he require a position associated with him? Please don't answer that, it's been a long week, Councilman Burnett.
Wait, 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 hold on, you, you guys, you, you have narco, you have explosives and CDS dogs. See, I'm fairly certain that Scooby-Doo is a Scooby snack dog.
Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I'll try and keep my questions short, first, early in the presentation, it was mentioned that the department has spent close to seventy thousand hours at an events coverage, and of that time, one-point-nine million dollars was unreimbursed for that, can you explain why?
Well, unlike other jurisdictions, we don't get reimbursed in entirety for the dedication of police officers to special events, so let's talk about the Ravens and the Orioles, the Maryland Stadium Authority reimburses the BPD for Baltimore police officers who are assigned inside of those stadiums during those games, but the resources that we must, not may, but must deploy outside the stadiums, traffic control, crowd control, et cetera, we are not reimbursed, that, that's on us, and when we detail police officers to those assignments, we detail them from the nine district stations, so when we take them from the nine district stations, that enhances it, or, and adds, really artificially, to our staffing shortage, so now we're drafting a police officer to work overtime, to work patrol, because we took that patrol officer to send down to that special event, it, it, this is an issue that other jurisdictions have figured out, and I know that the, that the mayor and her team is working really, really hard to, to have that conversation, again, with the, with the stadium authority, and all the other events councilmen in the city, Preakness, Fourth of July, Light City, Artscape, I mean, I could go on and on, that, that's on us, too, there's, there's little to no reimbursement, that's unusual.
I'd ask a follow-up to finance, is that, or the administration, whoever can answer this, is that an agreement that, how often is that agreement renegotiated?
Councilman, in this fiscal eighteen budget, we have included a million dollars of estimated additional reimbursement, but that will require a renegotiation of the agreement, there's no timeframe on the agreement, so this will require the cooperation of the Orioles and Ravens and the Stadium Authority, but this is an issue that, you know, we raised all the way back when Caroline worked in BBMR, and she studied it, and we, we looked at, what's the, not just the issue of reimbursement, you know, inside versus outside, but also, what's the full cost of the service being provided, we're getting a flat forty-five-dollar overtime rate inside the stadium, the true cost is, is higher than that, so we'd like to discuss both, both issues with the, with the teams, and-
Do you, do you know what the true cost actually is, have you calculated that?
I mean, our estimate was, it's about two million more than what we're being reimbursed, we've assumed a million in the budget to be conservative, because again, this, this is not a done deal until we can, we can negotiate.
So, one-point-nine unreimbursed is what we know about, and then you're saying an additional two million, is it an, additional two million on top of that?
Fuel, cars, maintenance, all, all that.
So, it's really close to the four million dollars?
Well, my number, my number includes a full cost calculation, so it's, it's, I think what you have within there is based on a, I don't even, I'm not sure what you're looking at, but-
I, just going off of the, the statement earlier, that there was one point, one-point-nine million dollars unreimbursed.
I'm not sure if that includes what we're talking about here or not.
Could, could we add that as a, a follow-up?
Yes.
To the committee to get a detailed impact of what that is?
Yes.
I mean, when we're, when we're talking about the impact on the budget.
Councilor, can you just repeat that question for me?
Yeah, so the tot, so we know that there's one-point-nine million dollars unreimbursed by special events that they, they were covering for, but then it was just disclosed that there may be an additional impact on fuel, vehicles, overtime, so just trying to get an idea of the total cost.
Sure, I, I can provide some clarity there, because the one-point-nine million was made here from BPD, and I'm also familiar with the study that Andrew's speaking of, because I was the one that actually did that a couple of years ago when I worked in finance, so when I worked in finance, the study that he's referring to, we did do an analysis to determine the true cost, and that includes overhead costs that we're not currently being billed for, what is currently billed for is the actual officer's overtime cost, but there's other administrative costs such as the fuel and other things that does not get captured in that cost. What you heard Major Corbett state earlier today is that we do provide over seventy thousand police hours supporting special events, of those, one-point-nine million is not reimbursed, two-point-four million is reimbursed, of the one-point-nine million that is unreimbursed, about seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven of that represents sporting events support for the Orioles and Ravens.
Wow, so between those two teams, oh, you said seven, around seven-hundred thousand?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're almost seven-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars just for those two teams.
And, and when was that study done?
Um, okay, so the numbers that I'm giving to you just now-
But you said you were part of finance.
Yeah, so when I was, I've been at BPD now for four years, so that analysis was done in the summer of twenty thirteen, and since then, it has been updated, I believe it was updated-
Last year.
Last year, okay.
Okay, um, that just seems like a lot of money, when we, when we're talking about the crunch that we're in, especially because other DC and other major cities actually do cover that cost, no, this is, sorry, just a follow-up to, the total amount that we're requesting, does that also take into account overtime spent in, on the district level as well, because that would obviously be an additional cost, if you have officers that are covering a Ravens game, that means it's putting more pressure at Southwest District to pay overtime, is, is that a part of this calculation?
And, uh, so, so that, that's the true number, so we're gonna-
That we don't know, we don't know that number.
Well, we, we can, I'm sure, put it together.
Yes, we know that, but as we're saying, that's the true cost, when you start looking at the, the true cost, when we're saying it's the cost of the, the officer's actual salary and all of that other admin, now you're throwing in that admin that you have to do the backfill at the district, so that would get factored into the-
And, so you do have that cost available, could you provide it to the committee?
Absolutely.
Okay, got it, thank you, um, so, yes, uh, sorry, I have like ten questions, but I've been told to shorten it. [laughing] Trying to figure out where to start, okay, um, so, this is a question for the Commissioner, so, I was just a little bit confused about just the staffing of the administrative office, so there's three deputy commissioner positions, who are those folks?
Who, who are they?
Yeah.
Oh, so the three deputy commissioners, two of the three are here, Dean Paul Mears is the deputy commissioner, Jason Johnson's the deputy commissioner, Daryl De Souza is a deputy commissioner, and this is new for Baltimore, so I, I didn't do a good job explaining it when we embarked upon this, but our profession has available to it internships, and one of the most prestigious internships in all of policing is at the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the IACP, and thankfully, they're headquartered right in Alexandria, Virginia, so each year, the IACP selects about half a dozen police executives to intern at IACP for a full year, so Deputy De Souza has been there for about ten months, he returns in August with a wealth of experiences and best practices to bring back to the BPD, on June the seventh, our, our patrol chief, Mo Robinson, Osborne Robinson, returns after he graduates from the FBI National Academy, that's a prestigious assignment, only a few of us in our profession has, have been afforded the opportunity to attend it, and Chief Melissa Hyatt this year participated in the Police Executive Research Forum's Leadership Institute that took her out of the city for several weeks as well, so, these are training, education opportunities that I believe in organization our size, with the challenges we have, we would be, we would be foolish not to pursue these opportunities, so.
Okay, um, so just two follow-ups to that, really short, so, are the internships covered by the organizations, is there like a scholarship, or is that come at a cost, not that I'm against professional development, but-
No, they're, they're, they, they continue to earn their salaries while they're away.
Okay, and when they return, your third commissioner, is he, what was he doing before, and what will he be returning to?
So, when, we've restructured a couple times over the last two years, so we're on the verge of restructuring again- on the verge of restructuring again as we prepare to go into the consent decree. So by the end of this summer, we will reorganize one more time. And again, it's anticipation of the consent decree and all the requirements that they're going to bring with it. So as soon as we have that restructuring done, we'll share that with the council.
Thank you. Sorry, just trying to prioritize here.
Councilman, I'll come right back to you.
Yeah, please do, sorry.
Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner, and to your team. First of all, appreciate your advocacy on behalf of changing the restrictions around marijuana convictions to be an officer.
Thank you.
I think that was needed change. Do want to reiterate some of the frustration that our president expressed about runaway overtime costs. You know, it is challenging to our citizens to see the level of overtime that is going out, given that we still have schools that are crumbling, given the sorry state of our streets, the sorry state of much of our public housing in the city of Baltimore. And so I just want to really reiterate the call. And I know, and I've heard you say that the contract and the staffing procedure is critically important, but I do really want to reiterate the call that the amount of overtime that we've seen go out is just unacceptable to our citizens, and I would hope to you all as well. Wanted to ask specifically about something that was lifted up in the DOJ report and then the consent decree around sexual assault. We know we've had some serious challenges with problematic investigation of sexual assault. This is something that the DOJ report was really clear on, and that there were some provisions put into the consent decree to deal with sex, with the reporting and investigations around sexual assault. I was wondering if you could articulate your strategy for how the BPD will improve on that particular set of practices.
So, Councilman, thank you. I share your thoughts on overtime, and we're going to look ourselves in the mirror and get better, I promise you. The DOJ findings report covered a period of time from 2010 to 2015, and most of the time, if not all of the time in the body of that report, it did not reference the calendar year when they were identifying a deficiency. We've come a long way with our sexual assault investigations. I think we've done a 180 with them. The processes that are in place to include now housing all of our investigators under one roof at the Baltimore Child Abuse Center is a best practice. We have a different command structure in place, different detectives in place. We have different oversight procedures in place, so a detective who makes a mistake intentionally or unintentionally, that mistake does just not linger. That allows a victim to get hurt time after time. So I'll ask Chief Martin to just fill in the blanks a little bit, and then Steve Odell, Chief Odell, where are we after Chief Martin with our backlog? I think we've made some strides there.
Yeah, so to the police commissioner's point, there have been a lot of strides made by our new commander. One of the things we did early on in even the investigation is we hired a expert, and this person is actually a monitor on another team that looks at sexual assault cases. And when they looked at our cases, they did find some deficiencies, but the main thing that they found was that we weren't following what they said was a best practice checklist that we had come up with. So what Captain Holman does now is he has bi-weekly, I believe, meetings with all of his commanders, or all those people that are under his command, to ensure that they're actually checking the boxes to make sure that they're going through the protocols as far as investigation goes. The other thing that was pointed out in the report was just how we deal with victims of sexual assault. So a couple of months ago, we had a announcement where we created a trauma-informed care area for that. Additionally, within the first year, which is going to come up probably in the next six months, we are required to revise our policies and procedures according to paragraph 258 in the consent decree. So there are a couple of things that we're already kind of moving forward on, and certainly when the monitor comes, and once they're selected and we come up with a monitoring plan, you'll be able to see and benchmark the improvements that we're going to make regarding the sexual assault investigations.
And Chief Odell, before you go over the numbers, we're all probably familiar with The Keepers on Netflix, the series about Kio in 1969. And we put on our website, I think, Chief Smith, we did that last week or so, a way for sexual assault victims from the late '60s, early '70s, who were students at that school or otherwise associated, or ran into a particular priest identified in that series, so they can reach out, even now, to the BPD to have a voice and to get us started.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear you say that. Also, you know, all the evidence would suggest it is an under-reported crime across the board, particularly, and this is anecdotal, but recently in southeast Baltimore, within our immigrant community, because of, and we've talked about this quite a bit, the frayed relationship caused by the ICE raids that have gone on in our communities. I'm hearing a lot about sexual assault that is not getting reported to you all within our immigrant communities. And so, you know, would definitely appreciate a very proactive approach to just...
We involve our SART team, our Sexual Assault Response Team, that's the BPD, the State's Attorney's Office, Mercy, and advocates. Maybe we can partner with them to do something specifically with that vulnerable population in the southeast.
The last thing I'll add to your point, and then I'll turn it over to Steve. Part of the consent decree is not only the police recognizing issues and correcting them, but it's how do we engage with those communities to better respond to those issues? And so if there's groups or people that you want to put in contact with me so that they can be part of working groups as we move forward on new policies, programs, training, and reporting, the key to the consent decree being successful and sustainable is actually creating policies and programs that speak to the experiences of the community. So we need all of that input as we move forward, putting this together.
And Chief, I would just say that, you know, it's, you all will have a lot of work to do to build trust with that community and with so many communities in our city.
Councilman Cohen, if I could add one thing, a point to the anxiety with, particularly in the Hispanic community with immigration and whatnot. We've implemented, the commissioner's actually selected a Hispanic liaison that has been working with our investigative units, and they're offering them other options. So even if there's still anxiety to report directly to police, we give them other options such as Jane Doe and so forth. But that communication's very important.
Appreciate that. And just to be clear, though, not just our Hispanic community. We have multiple immigrant communities.
Sure, I was using as an example.
Sure.
So the, just to add to the, a little bit to the numbers and such, the, since the commissioner's been in charge, we've had a significant change in the number of kits that have been submitted and tested. So even when that came out, we were testing 15 to 16, and 17 or 18 that were coming in a month in the laboratory at this time. And at actually the time the report came out, we had no backlog for rape kit testing, which surprised a lot of people, I think. And that is defined as a kit that is outstanding more than 30 days. So we had zero, and we still, right now, to this day, have zero in terms of rape kit testing. Otherwise, some of the other changes, we, I'm on the SART team that would work on some of this, and we've done some of that. And I was just recently appointed to the Maryland Sexual Assault Evidence Kit Policy and Funding Committee, which was started from the committee that was tasked by the Attorney General for standardizing practices, which the ending report for that were majority hour practices. So everything that came out in that to standardize the state are from BPD. So we've come a long way from the 2010 to 2015 timeframe that you're reading about, so you can feel confident about those facts.
I would just say, you know, I think it is one of the real challenges when I talk to folks about why they don't trust the police. You know, it often goes back to concerns about sexual assault, rape kits, all the rest. So I'd just strongly encourage you all to continue to build those practices and, you know, follow best practices across the country. And again, you know, we do not want to go back to having a situation where particularly women, but all sorts of victims are feeling like they're not being listened to by the police.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thanks, everybody, for being here. It was a long hearing. Glad we're wrapping it up. I'll just, for the record, share a little bit of my experience firsthand with the police department. At about 24 years old, I was pulled over by officers for no reason given. I had myself and my passengers illegally searched. The reason apparent was being white in a black neighborhood at the time. About a year after that, I was again stopped by the exact same officer in the exact same place, and not only was illegally searched, but had property of mine illegally seized. It actually cost me money to get my license reissued as a result of that. Again, no officer, no reason was given, just being white in a black neighborhood. As a white male with great privilege that comes along with that, I can only imagine what happens to black men for being black in a white neighborhood. Unfortunately, I don't have to imagine that. It's everyday occurrences in Baltimore City. I have also waited for two and a half, three hours for police responses at my home, only to be insisted to by a rookie officer that he was not going to and did not need to write a report for me after waiting for that length of time. I have also, I've had numerous experiences with the Baltimore City Police Department that I found utterly, utterly unacceptable and do not reflect well on its history. So I kind of come from that background as a lifelong city resident, and one whose experience, I imagine, is reflective of many people's experience in Baltimore City. With that, I want to understand, I'll share one other thing that's happened since I've been in this position. One April morning, I woke up to an email and a voice message to the effect that a gentleman called me and he said, "I've been trying to get a copy of a police report for the last week and a half. I've been calling the officer who wrote the report every day and have not been hearing back from him. I need the police report as soon as possible so that I can file an insurance claim, because I desperately need the money so that I can make a settlement payment on a house that I'm buying, that I had the money for at the time that I put it under contract, but had to spend unexpectedly to bury my wife who was murdered by our son." And he didn't even get a call back for a week and a half under those kind of circumstances. I really need people to understand that people in Baltimore City are operating under really strenuous circumstances in a lot of cases. And things like simply being able to get a report when they need one matter in people's everyday life. And so I want to talk about something that I've brought up in hearings in the past here, and I'd like to try to get a little bit more of an answer than I've gotten there, and that's what this reporting process looks like, what it means to call for an officer at your home and have them show up and know that when they leave, there's going to be a permanent record that somebody can go back to when they need it. What happens when a report gets made in Baltimore City? And then I want to talk about how that's going to change under the capacity to do in-field electronic reporting.
So field-based reporting, Councilman, will solve a lot of that. Field-based reporting was introduced to most American police departments in the 1990s. I had the first mobile data computer in my police car in 1998. So for whatever reason, it just hasn't been a priority in Baltimore, and it is now. So when it comes to the availability of police reports, field-based reporting is an immediate dissemination, electronic dissemination of a police report to a records management system that will ultimately ensure that its availability will be much faster than it is right now, because we still use pen and paper. So there's a, the human frustration element when it comes to, when it comes to police officers or any other person in any profession not adhering to the rules and policies and procedures. And we think we've done a lot over the last two years to share with the community that if they're frustrated with a police experience, and it doesn't have to be a misconduct experience, that's certainly the most egregious, but it can be a frustration with not getting a copy of a report. There are so many ways to get in touch with the BPD now that we advertise on our website and social media, because we know that one bad experience, if it's not resolved with a citizen, lives with a person forever. So for the bad experiences that you had as a young man with the police, I'm sorry you had those experiences. You're right, you certainly are not the only one. And the folks that are in front of you now are committed to bringing better policing to this great city. So specifically, maybe I'll ask Deputy Paulmier to talk specifically about, it depends on what type of report you're talking about, whether it's an accident report or a crime report, but you want to try to tackle that one, do you?
So the process as it works with the paper system, essentially, depending on what crime occurred, the officer's required to take a report. He'll ask the dispatcher for a report number. What the complainant receives immediately is what we call a Form 309. It basically is a pamphlet that has the complaint number, the officer's name, the officer's sequence number, the date of the incident, and then in that pamphlet, it contains various information about obtaining police reports and so forth. All that, again, is available on the website. But the reason that that occurs is because we are on a paper system. So when that officer generates through our CAD system a complaint number, there is an electronic record of the call for service, the dispatch, and the history of that call. What the officer's required to do at that point is put pen to paper and document the incident as it was described by the complainant. He then...
So I just, I want to get kind of a timeline.
Yeah, so the timeline is...
A call from my house about, somebody smashed my window.
Mm-hmm.
And I call, and the 911 operator takes that call, and I get transferred to dispatch, or they send it to dispatch, and...
Yeah, so the 911 operator takes the call. As they're getting the information, they're forwarding that, they're forwarding the information electronically to dispatch.
Okay, and so that generates a number from the operator
Yes.
that goes to the dispatcher, and that gets then associated also with a CAD number?
Yes.
Okay, so then we've got two numbers. We've got a call number, and we've got a CAD number.
Yeah, exactly. Call number, which is entered into 911, it's transferred up to CAD, generates a CAD number. The call's dispatched. Depending on the call for service, if it requires a report, then you generate a complaint number.
Okay, so then there's a complaint number. How does that differ from a CAD number?
CAD is simply for CAD management. Complaint number is for UCR crime reporting and our tracking purposes. It's a metric of written reports.
The officer comes to my house with a call number and a CAD number, and I complain somebody threw a brick through my window.
Mm-hmm.
Now he's got a complaint number.
Correct, for malicious destruction.
What then?
So he'll take, basically what he'll have to do is write the report on paper.
On a piece of paper that is not a triplicate form.
It's, it is a triplicate form.
I have received a number of, I have asked for reports, and whenever I get one, it's on a single eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper that's... on a single eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper that's bi-folded-
Yes.
-and it's got all the information down here.
That's the Form 309, so-
That's the Form 309. That's not a triplicate form, that's a single form.
Exactly, that's the Form 309. So the actual police report that the officer writes-
Mm-hmm.
-it is a transparency report, but the reason you don't receive that report immediately is because it has to go through an approval process. So that report then goes to the supervisor.
Okay, so they take this piece of paper, they write down this information on it, they give it to me.
Yes.
They no longer have that information because they wrote it on a piece of paper and gave it to me.
They have it.
What else do they have to do?
They have to write the report.
They have to write the report. Where do they write that?
Generally in their car on post. The supervisor then collects reports. And this is again, you know, an equated system-
And I've never seen that happen.
You're-
I've only ever seen that it gets written down on a little spiral-bound notepad.
Right. So basically the officer will take his notes.
They do that, but then they go to the car-
They'll go to the car-
And they write something else down.
They write an actual report that they'll keep in a clipboard or file within the car.
Okay, so they make their notes and then they go and transfer those notes to their actual report.
Councilman, we'll be glad to give you a one-on-one tour of records management, walking through this.
That's okay, that's not necessary for this purpose. And-
I know we talked about this last time, too.
And Councilman, I, trust me, this isn't a good system. That's why we are looking forward to electronic reporting.
You have to invest in police. You have to invest. And we're writing, we're writing reports with an ink pen and a piece of paper.
Commissioner, with all due respect, I want to go, I want to try to finish this a little bit.
Okay.
That report goes to a supervisor for approval?
Yes.
How long does it take an officer, I mean, a supervisor to review a report?
Depending, again, it's done by the end of his tour duty, but again-
That day?
Yes.
Every time?
Most, yes, most of the time. I will not guarantee every day, but within the next morning when he comes back in, next shift.
What would prohibit it from being reviewed?
If it's a Part One crime report, they're required to do it by the end of their tour duty.
What's a Part One crime?
UCR Part One crimes, homicide, aggravated assault, robbery, persons against crime, or crimes against persons, basically, Part One crime.
Okay, I did see Part One crime somewhere in the notes that you gave. Average time, minutes to enter Part One report into record management system, twenty minutes. That's what time, that's, this is in the records management section of the report here.
Councilman, that's the amount of time it takes for a data entry clerk to enter each individual report upon its arrival at the records management section. That's that metric.
A data entry clerk?
That's correct.
They enter the report into a records management system?
That's correct.
Is that-
Councilman, I-
I think that this is important to discuss.
Okay, okay, understood, but I'm-
We were going to offer again, if you want to come over and we'll give you the full tour of this.
It's pertinent to the discussion of the budget.
Okay, is there, I'm going to, in the interest of time, I'm going to go back to you, Councilman, right now.
Yep.
I'm going to ask that you wrap up and get to what the question is that's germane to the budget discussion. Commissioner, thank you for making that offer and I would appreciate, Commissioner, if your office would follow up with Councilman Dorsey at a later time, whether he chooses to or not, to take that tour, Councilman.
So a supervisor has to review the report and then what, do they pass it to a data entry clerk?
So those reports are ultimately transported from the district down to headquarters where our records management system is. A clerk within the records management section, again, reviews that report and does the data entry for UCR crime report.
How much of this time is going to be saved by the implementation of the electronic field reporting process?
It would save, and Commissioner, I don't want to answer for you, but-
It's a game changer. It changes the game.
Yeah.
The Pony Express is over.
Right.
Right? It's an immediate electronic dissemination. I sit in my patrol car, I type it on my mobile data computer, I send it to my sergeant, my sergeant reads and approves it, and my sergeant sends it to record management immediately. And we don't need someone to input data because the report stands on its own.
So can you give me a ballpark of the percentage of the time in total for the officer to handwrite the report, rewrite the report for him, handwrite the complaint, the 309, write the report up, have a data entry clerk? What percentage of that total time are we talking about saving? Eighty percent?
At least three quarters.
Easily, easily three quarters.
It's 20th century technology.
Okay. I want to talk, I want to come back to that in just a second. The current collective bargaining agreement has in it a schedule. I understand that it's a priority for everybody to get that schedule out of the collective bargaining agreement. That schedule required a certain number of officers, requires a certain number of officers on patrol at any given time. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
Is that number of officers an adequate number based on the current demands of our reporting system?
The reporting system doesn't dictate our case.
The reporting system has a lot to do with the efficiency of our workforce. So is the-
So that's a statement, but go ahead.
Did that number of patrol officers get determined within the framework of the demands of the inefficiencies of our reporting process?
Absolutely not. If it was as simple as I think you're getting at, we would have figured this out many, many years ago. There is a demand for police services in the city of Baltimore that's coupled with a demand in your council district and others for the visibility and presence of police. And then there's also a demand that we place on police officers to proactively fight crime by identifying people who are engaged in suspicious activities. So the 20th century technology that will eventually land in Baltimore in 2017 won't necessarily reduce the need for having more police officers. And you and I may fundamentally disagree about that and I'm prepared to accept that, but field-based reporting won't reduce the need for more police officers in Baltimore. We have a demand of police in our city that we can't keep up with right now. And that's not going away anytime soon.
What we're talking about is essentially the equivalent of having four times as many officers on the street because three quarters of their time and productivity-
That's an oversimplification, Councilman. And I know you're getting frustrated with me because I'm getting frustrated with you. That's an oversimplification and I'd be glad to spend some time with you in BPD Headquarters to go over a lot of these issues at length.
And we're not talking simply, every call for service is not a report.
Councilman, I'm going to have to respectfully ask you to wrap it up, please.
I will move on from that and just ask for closure rates on larceny from auto calls. How many calls we get and have officers respond to versus how many arrests that directly relates to?
We'll get back to you on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilman Burnett for an extremely quick question. Commissioner, I'm sure you'll appreciate this. Obi from my office bought me a Diet Coke. I've been drinking about twelve of these a day to get through these hearings and for some reason it says Davis on it. I don't know if that was intentional or not. It must have just been the one that came out the vending machine. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I saw, so I actually have 1.5 questions. One is really quick. There was 1.8 million allocated for casino support, of which that represents an increase of 105,000. Does the casino reimburse the city for that dedicated expense?
Major Corbett, we do have overtime officers working there and the casino do reimburse a portion of that.
Do you know how much, what the portion is or would you be able to provide that to the committee?
Technically, it's funded with Casino Impact Aid from the state.
Okay. So that was my half question. The other half question, do you know how much has been expended in FY17 in overtime and what was, what is budgeted for fiscal year 18?
At the casino, Councilman?
No, no, just in general, overall.
One sentence. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have a follow-up after that, I just wanted to know the number.
Okay, so our overall overtime spending for our general fund daily as of May 13, we are at 39.5 million.
And I couldn't find, and maybe this is a question for finance, I was trying to figure out how much was budgeted for the next, for the coming fiscal year?
So, 16.5 million.
Thank you.
Are you good, Councilman Burnett?
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Scott?
Thank you, everybody. I'm glad to see you didn't leave in my absence and my return. Commissioner, I just want to talk briefly about the ceasefire program. This morning, we had a presentation from the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, well, the Mayor's Chief of Staff, as there is no executive director of the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, and they gave us the impression that the Police Department may have wanted to walk away from that program. I don't think that that is something that you guys would do or push to do. Now, I personally believe that the program should have never been put directly under you, that it made more sense to put it under Health, much like we did Safe Streets. Could you talk about the status of that program?
So, Councilman, we're continuing to have a conversation with the mayor and her staff both about ceasefire and Safe Streets. So it's an ongoing conversation, yes, sir. That's all I can say.
Thank you. That's my only question.
Thank you, Councilman Scott. Commissioner, we're going to get you out of here in a minute. One, I want to take, we've done 47 hours of hearings over the last four days. One, I want to say thank you to my colleagues, Councilman Scott, Burnett, Dorsey, Pinkett, Bullock, Cohen and Snead. Really appreciate you guys staying until the end. This council really wants to get a deal done with this administration. We do. We're committed to that. We're committed to being partners with the mayor. We know that the mayor wants to work with us and we appreciate that. And I'm confident we're going to get a deal done on Monday. That being said, this council is extremely serious about its priorities. I'm not going to hash up any bad blood that's occurred over the past couple of days, but our priorities are our priorities and we treat them very seriously. And they're a big part of what we've been discussing tonight about crime prevention, about funding our youth, about budgeting. Budgeting is an activity and prioritization and we budget with our values. And that's how everyone on this council treats it. And we think it's important to fund city schools. We think it is important to have after-school and community school programs funded, fully funded. We think it's important to fund the food bank to make sure that we're getting meals to our low-income seniors. We believe it's important to fund Safe Streets unanimously, no question about it. We think AARP Experience Corps, where we're bringing our seniors into schools to help get our students to grade level by third grade in literacy, is critically important. We believe that the University of Maryland Cooperative Extension is important. All those things are important to us. And our values, we believe, are the mayor's shared values. We share those values with the mayor. We know how the mayor feels about youth. We're appreciative for the Herculean effort that the mayor made in Annapolis. But that, that was a month and a half ago, that's Annapolis. Now we're here now and this budget is, right now, happens to be the city council's, not the mayor's. And we want to get this budget out, we want to vote this budget out as is. We want to give it back to you so that the mayor can sign it into law and we can get back to working together and helping to move our city forward. So we're committed to that. I know I can speak for the council president when I say we're going to keep lines of communication open. This committee is going to reconvene on Monday, May, June 5th, pardon me, I lost track of the month, at 4:00 PM. I know we've got a meeting scheduled in the afternoon, early afternoon on Monday. We're going to come to that meeting with an open mind and it's my belief that cooler heads are going to prevail and we're going to get a deal done. I'd like to thank Marguerite Kern first for setting this room up and providing the fruit snacks and Diet Coke and taking care of us all week and all these presentations. I'd like to thank Kim Trueheart and Baby Ray, the only two citizens that don't work for a city agency that have stuck through most of this process. I want to thank my vice chair, Leon Pinkett, who has done an absolutely excellent job and has been a great partner. Charm TV for filming all of this and dealing with our insane schedule that I came up with, which the council president has still not forgiven me for. I want to thank Karen Stokes and Karan Banks from the mayor's office. Through all of this frustration and madness, you have dealt in good faith and been helpful and tried to help us get to the finish line and the city council appreciates you. And I want to thank council president Young and his staff, especially Kara Kuntz from the council president's office. With that, we're going into recess until Monday, June 5th at-
We have one quick question. I'm good.
Councilman Dorsey?
This is a question for Mr. Klein. The, I would like an itemized list of the monetary value of the paid leave bank of 300 days per year that is created for members of the lodge, the FOP, as well as the monetary value of the salary paid to the president of the FOP who is on, who is given full-time administrative leave, as well as the others on full-time administrative leave from duty to the Baltimore City Police Department. Thank you.
We're now in recess.